Okay, if councilors could take their seats, please, we'll get going. Councilor Starr. Okay, good evening and welcome to the October 9th, 2025 Barnstable Town Council meeting. In accordance with the Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make your presence known. Seeing no one, this meeting is being recorded and televised live via Xfinity Channel 8, Channel 1070, and High Definition Channel 1072. It may also be accessed via the Government Access Channel livestream feed on the town website, the My Barnstable app, and the dedicated Barnstable streaming app. Okay, if we could have roll call, please.
Counselors.
Bloom.
Here.
Burdick.
Present.
Clark.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
Leveque. Lutke.
Here.
Mendez. Neary.
Here.
Penn.
Here.
Schnapp.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Tamish.
Here.
Turkelson.
Here.
You have quorum.
You have a quorum, thank you. Counselor Lutke, please.
Thank you, President Tamish. We are joined by a gentleman here that really needs no introduction, but he's going to get one anyways. And it's a pleasure to have him here, especially since this October, October 13th to be exact, is the 250th anniversary of the U.S. Navy. And we have two Navy veterans this month. This is the first one, and we have another one at the end of the month scheduled to celebrate the birthday of the Navy. And the particular veteran we have this evening served on the USS Constitution, which is almost as old as the Navy. I don't know, something like 238 years old, something like that, but not quite the 250. So we really have a special guest tonight, and we're going to hear about him, so please remain seated while we hear about our veteran, our Navy veteran for this evening. Master-at-Arms and Second Class Petty Officer-Gunner's Mate Brian Morrison was born and raised in Hyannis, Massachusetts. He now lives in Centerville with his wife Erin Salozzi Morrison and one of his daughters. Another daughter lives in Yarmouth and another in California, and they have two granddaughters. And we're very pleased to have Erin sitting beside Brian tonight, thank you. Brian is the youngest of seven children, son to Mary Morrison, a lifetime educator in the Nauset School System for 42-plus years, and then St. Francis Xavier School for another 10. And George Morrison, who is profoundly missed as one of the town of Barnstable's well-known auxiliary police officers and then parking enforcement officer. Brian attended the Barnstable Public School System until he graduated from Barnstable High School in 1989. Just three days after graduating, he found himself at Great Lakes, Illinois in Navy bootcamp. Now, instead of traveling the world, upon graduation from bootcamp, he was sent right back to Massachusetts to be stationed on the USS Constitution in Charlestown, Mass. He stayed there for two years. He then shipped out to Charleston, South Carolina at the start of the Persian Gulf War, known as Operations Desert Storm and Desert Shield. After his active-duty deployment and service was completed, he immediately joined the United States Navy Reserves, where he would serve until 2015. During that time, he served as a Navy CB and as the Chief Security Officer for the Commanding Officer. In 1993, as he was serving in the reserves, he was lucky enough to get hired as a Barnstable Police Summer Officer for three or four summers. In 1997, he was then hired full-time. During his Reserve Service Duty, he was lucky enough to travel to about 65 countries over the years and managed to visit all 50 states in the United States. However, he always came back to good old Cape Cod and the town of Barnstable. He is currently one of the Barnstable Police Department's School Resource Officers, Civil Rights Officers, and Community Resource Officers, among many other duties. He primarily working out of the Barnstable United Elementary School and the Hyannis Youth and Community Center. He has two Associate's Degrees, one from Central Texas College and another from Cape Cod Community College. He also has a Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice from Western New England College and a Master's Degree in Criminal Justice from Faulkner University in Montgomery, Alabama. Let's welcome Master-at-Arms and Second Class Petty Officer-Gunner's Mate Brian Morrison to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Thank you, thank you, councilors, everybody. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you could remain standing for the moment of silence, please. Tonight, we would like to dedicate it to all the servicemen, not just the Navy, but all servicemen who have given their lives for the country. Thank you.
And thank you, Go Navy, Beat Army.
Brian, Brian, one quick question. As part of your duties, you visited all 50 states?
Yes. I did try to do just...
Oh, okay. I was just wondering what presence the Navy had in Utah.
They do have Big Lake.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to public comment at this point. Please make sure you sign in with your name and village for public comment. Public comment is three minutes. Please keep your comments brief and to the point. Written comments are always welcome at council@town.barnstable MA.us and will be distributed to the entire council. I wish to remind everyone that no member of the public may speak without first being recognized by the presiding officer. The public will have an opportunity to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting and during any public hearing on an agenda item. You're free to express your thoughts, opinions, and criticism during public comment. However, your comments must be directed to the council as a body through the presiding officer. You may not speak directly to any individual counselor. You also should not be addressing your comments to anyone else in this room, not to town staff and not to another member of the audience. Public comment is to be directed to the council. We also ask that members of the public refrain from making audible comments during the meeting unless they have been recognized to speak by the presiding officer. I think many of you may be here for the public hearing also on the stretch code, so if you could, in the interest of time and brevity, there will be a public hearing on that item. If you could direct your comments to the stretch code at that time, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Roberta Mock, AD Greenwood Ave., Hyannis. Mr. Tamish, trusted counsel, thank you for what you do for our town. With a lot of respect for you folks, it's not an easy job. How critically important public comment is at town council and all branches of governance for the good of our community, our town. Public comment, our voices bring transparency. It shines a light on that which is neglected, our conflict of interest. It keeps our priorities in order. It brings balance to our town process. I'm here tonight to ask that all bodies that govern our beautiful town of Barnstable show greater respect for public comment. Town council does well, zoning and planning, I don't go to enough, Conservation Commission I have a problem with. This week, 34 people participated in public comment for the commission. It appeared to the residents on the Zoom meeting that occurred on October 7th and became part of public record that the town of Barnstable was not being held to the same high standards of procedure as residents when it comes to protecting our natural environment. I'm talking about Aunt Betty's Pond. It seems that we caught, from what I heard, someone at the town putting up either a fake DEP sign for the pumping project. A statement was made in that meeting that that is corrupt. I made that statement. Rebuttal from one Conservation Commissioner stated that when it was for the common good, the town action stands approved. We, the members of the Barnstable community, ask that our governing bodies be held to the same, if not greater, standard of respect for our voices, especially when it comes to our natural environment. All details of standard, all details of standard of procedure when it comes to protecting the environment of the Hyannis Village. Dr. Jane Goodall reminded us that we humans are part of the wildlife animal kingdom. The more we pave and build and encroach, the less we leave of the natural beauty and wildlife of Cape Cod, the beauty of our town, our home, Cape Cod. As Dr. Jane Goodall stated, God's creatures are like us. Barnstable Village of Hyannis is the worst offender of all the villages on the Cape. That's not good. We need to do better. Aunt Betty's Pond, with the highest PFAs, is being used by the town as a flushing station for sewage. Maybe I've oversaid that. I was angry when I wrote this. Where is the respect for Eugenia Fortes, for Aunt Betty's Pond, for the lost herring run of the West End, for Joshua's Creek and Stewart's Creek? We have to do better. Every other village is doing their job. In Howard, where the director of Glass Eels from Master Fisher lives, they are putting in glass eel bridges. What is our village doing to protect endangered species? We need better planning. Hyannis Village is no longer as beautiful as it was. We... I'm going to skip part of this because I was pretty angry. The historical Christian Scientists Church being as a teardown for an ugly housing? I don't understand. Cape Cod Bank and Trust, that could have been a wonderful location for a... The new Hyannis Library, Combined Cultural Center?
Ms. Mock, your time is up.
Can I just finish? I'm right at the end of the page. This is important, I'm just... I'm sorry. We're not just owners and residents of Cape Cod, we are stewards of the land. I have more, but I'll bring it to the next one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Heather?
Good evening, guys. Two years ago, I stood before you... Oh, I'm sorry, Heather Swenson, Centerville. Two years ago, I stood before you and made comment about transparency and communication with constituents. As a matter of fact, one of my letters to the council is still posted in a council member's website. So here I am again before you. Back on June 9th, I submitted a letter of interest for an open position on one of the town's committees. There was some back-and-forth rescheduling that took place for me to get an opportunity to speak with the Appointments Committee, and on August 12th, I did have that opportunity to sit down with some of those members. Later that evening, I sent an email to Ms. Lovell, partly stating, "Please pass on to town councilors my appreciation for today's opportunity to speak with them." That being said, to date, I have not received a single correspondence back from Ms. Lovell or the Appointments Committee, not a follow-up letter stating, "Thank you for applying," not a "Thank you for your interest, we're still considering other applicants," not a "Thank you, but we've made a different choice," not a "We've made a choice, but we're going to keep your application for future openings," not even a "Hell no" letter. Last week, I got a phone call from someone in town wondering had I watched the latest Appointments Committee meeting and that on tonight's agenda were the names of people filling those positions. Honestly, to no surprise, I'm not one of them. I'm okay with that. I understand I may not be the best qualified. I certainly know I'm not the favorite of many of you, and in reality, I didn't really feel my chances of getting an approval was all that great, but I do truly care about the community I live in. My final point being, this is only... This is a perfect example of lack of communication from town council to their constituents and a perfect example of poor business protocol in our town. Perhaps I'm old school, but I think follow-through goes a long way, and a letter would have been nice, even an email. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bob Schulte, and I live in the village of Centerville. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening regarding new business item 2026-039, which proposes to add a new zoning regulatory, zoning regulatory committee of the town council. I understand that tonight is just the first reading of this item, and there'll be no discussion or vote taken. First, I'd like to say that I understand and appreciate what I have been told by President Tamish and Director Cupfer about the general intent behind this item. I was told the intent is to have an advisory subcommittee that can discuss and develop draft ordinances and provide guidance on zoning and regulatory issues to the town council prior to it being assigned an item on the agenda. As the recent chair of the ad hoc committee to review and assess zoning and regulatory agreements, I spent the better part of the past 18 months reviewing and discussing these issues with a group comprised of both councilors and citizens, and clearly understand the importance of this process. However, it is my opinion that this item, as drafted and proposed by the legal department, is a significant step backwards in the town's stated desire to promote transparency and seriously consider the public's opinion and concerns when the council is making important decisions on zoning and regulatory matters. My primary objection is the requirement that the committee is be comprised of five town councilors only, no citizen members. As the ad hoc committee's chair, I admit my bias, but based on the overwhelmingly positive feedback and kudos provided by town council members and the public alike on the ad hoc committee's transparency and hard work, remind you again, a committee that was made up of about 50/50 councilors and residents, I can't even begin to understand why you would even want to consider the formation of a counselor-only subcommittee deal with issues of such great concern to Barnstable's residents. As most of you will remember, the town previously had a zoning regulatory subcommittee, which was comprised of just, interestingly, five town councilors and no residents. Back in 2019 to 2021, short tomb rental regulations were first discussed by that subcommittee. My wife and I, and dozens of other citizens, including representatives of the Hyannis, Centerville, Osterville, and Barnstable Village civic associations, would attend the public meetings of that committee month after month. We'd sit in the more intimate selectmen's conference room and ask questions and express concerns to the five council members. The responses we received from most of those members were typically a "Thank you for your comment" and a blank stare. We rarely received any meaningful response to our questions or concerns, so much for the robust and public process describing the rationale for item 202639. I'd also like to point out that the previous all counselor-comprised zoning regulatory subcommittee gave rise to an open meeting law complaint against three of its members. On July 16th, 2021, the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office found that three of those subcommittee members, two of whom are no longer on the council, but who... One who remains on the council today, had violated the state's open meeting law by texting one another privately about the discussions going on during the meeting.
Mr. Schulte, please wrap it up.
All right. I argue that these incidents would likely, let's likely occur if the subcommittee had been comprised of both councilors and members of the public. I'm asking the council tonight to withdraw and amend this item before any further consideration. I plan to follow up my comments this evening by speaking with Director Cupfer, President Tamish, and any other interested councilors regarding suggested amendments. Finally, I'm sure you all remember wacky Doc Brown in the movie Back to the Future, the guy who did The DeLorean. Well, I almost came dressed as Doc Brown tonight for my comments, because without further consideration and amendment, that is exactly what this agenda item will do, take us back to the future. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors and President Tamish. I'm going to talk about two matters, neither one of which appears to be open to the public. By that, I mean not public comment, but during the hearing itself. The first one deals with item number 2026035, the second reading, as I read it, of appointments that were made. I'm supporting the candidacy of Catherine Finkelstadt. However, I'm opposing the negative comments that were made at a prior hearing, the prior time this was read. At that time, it came up that the qualifications of this person were insufficient and therefore should not be included. However, in the process, that particular comment that I made, I'm going to repeat it again, is that why do you want everybody to think the same way on your committee? Why do you want people that are just going to rubber stamp what somebody else says or what somebody who's in control of it says? This woman needs to be appointed. She's been appointed. She needs to be, receive a positive vote from you when this matter is called. The second matter follows up on what Bob, on Bob Schulte just covered. My involvement the last two years with the stand, with the Appointments Committee is I've attended almost every one of the meetings. I'd like to think that I've made contributions. I know I've done so in writing extensively, and in the process, I was not part of that committee, but it was a committee that listened to us. And in the process of doing that, now you suddenly want to make it to a counselor-only, it's already been counselor-only. Ideally, why aren't there public members in that committee to have some participation? That's because that's where ad hoc committees come up. This, this map, this procedure of this entire rule, and it comes up again in two more weeks, and I'll say things again, but at that time, somebody has written this, and I pretty much know who it was, but more importantly, the things that you are trying to divide here is just kicking the public and the, you know what. It's just taking away from the public opinion and the present and the participation that is essential to the whole town itself. It's essential for you, it's essential for how we get these problems going. So I'll be better prepared in two weeks, and so be ready.
Thank you, Larry. Any further public comment?
Good evening, and thank you for your time to the president and members of the council. For the record, my name is Tim O'Neill, a resident of Kattuitt. I was born and raised in Barnstable Village, and I'm a builder by profession with a focus on residential and historic construction. I also serve on this town's planning board. I previously served on the zoning board on a budding town. I grew up here in Barnstable, I went to school here, I went off to college, and I came back to settle down and raise my family, build a career, and start a business in the same community that shaped me. In doing that, I've seen firsthand how difficult it has become to build, renovate, and even maintain a home on Cape Cod. We live in one of the most challenging places in the country to build, and not because people don't want to build responsibly, but because the rules we operate under are already some of the strictest anywhere. Massachusetts has become one of the most demanding building and energy codes, or has one of the most demanding in building and energy codes in the nation. And to that, our local concert, add to that our local conservation regulations, flood zones, high winds, construction standards, historic districts, and the fact that nearly every neighborhood in Barnstable is already built out, often with homes that don't even meet today's zoning standards. All paired with a harsh climate that we live in, filled with salt that corrodes our structures, so we need to make sure we build them well. Our builders and homeowners face layer upon layer of regulation, review, and cost. Most of our housing stock is older, that are clad with natural materials like cedar and pine that define our Cape character, but those materials and the labor to work with them have become harder and more expensive to come by. Our skilled trades are stretched thin, and nearly every piece of lumber and every worker has to come over the bridge. It all adds up. At the same time, we are staring down a housing crisis. Interest rates are high, material costs are up, and families are being priced out, not because they don't want to live here, but because it's becoming financially impossible to build, renovate, or expand with, all within these existing constraints. So when we look at new policies and mandates, it's critical that we ask, will this make it easier or harder to keep housing attainable? Will this help us build new homes that fit within our community character, or will it make balance even harder to achieve? The answer, I believe, lies in local control and thoughtful, deliberate decision-making. Barnstable has one of the most capable planning staffs and one of the best building departments in the region. These are professionals, professionals who know our community, our neighborhoods, and the real-world challenges our residents face. We should be empowering them, not stripping away their authority in favor of blanket policies written for cities hundreds of miles away. If we want meaningful progress on housing and sustainability, it has to come from Barnstable and for Barnstable. We need to thread the needle carefully, balancing our housing needs, our historic character, and the economic realities of what actually, what it actually takes to build here. And if we don't promote enough housing of this type and the kind that we want, we will face down many more 40B projects that are a permit vehicle designed by the state to override local control of housing density.
Mr. O'Neill, wrap it up, please.
Because the reality is, we already are walking a fine line, and if we keep stacking on unfunded mandates and outside rules that don't fit our town, we risk lighting a match to a powder keg of challenges that we're already struggling to match. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Mr. Carroll?
Yes, my name is Cliff Carroll, lifelong Barnstable resident, and I, I know you're going to allow more comments when the agenda item comes up, but I'm going to try to not repeat my comments when that item does come up. But a couple of different things, Mr. O'Neill really touched on several important items. I spent my majority of my life here, last 42, 43 years, either financing homes on Cape Cod, which provided construction loans for home buyers. I did thousands and thousands and thousands of mortgages. This stretch code proposal that's on the agenda item tonight is... This stretch code proposal that's on the agenda item tonight is something that we cannot afford to do. The items that are on this, yes, there is a large chunk of towns in the state that have already adopted it. We're the only town on the Cape that hasn't adopted it. That was probably one of the smartest things this board ever did six or seven years ago. The average cost that this will run up on someone's cost of construction is going to be probably 15% or 20% more to build these. But what's even worse than that, we hear about all these off-Cape towns where you're not allowed to have a barbecue grill anymore, you can't install oil or gas heat in your house. In other words, what this bill actually does is removes our right to choose how we would like to heat our homes. In addition to that, the triggers that are built into this are controlled by the state. We're going to give up our local control under building codes and state codes, and it's very easy to trigger these codes, which are going to mandate solar panels, a car charger in your garage, even if you don't have an electric car. It is going to cause major issues because about 90% of our inventory are 2x4 construction. To hit the guidelines and the HERS requirement, which is the minimum amount of heat seepage basically in a home, so I'm trying to keep this simple, it's almost impossible to hit without 2x6 or 2x8 construction. If our things get triggered by an addition on a home, there are so many different ways that you can trigger these codes. And again, keep in mind, once we adopt this code, the state can change their code anytime, and we're automatically going to come under it. We cannot afford to do this. It removes our rights as Barnstable residents to choose how we choose to heat our home, and there's a question on whether or not you could even have a gas fireplace. There's even questions on whether or not you can have a natural gas generator in your home. And if you did, the average that these heating systems require, right now, the average all-home generator could be about maybe 9,000 to, say, 10,000 kilowatts. You'll need a 14,000 or 20,000-kilowatt generator in your home if you want to maintain your heating system during a power outage on an all-electrically heated, heat-pumped property, where your stove, your water, everything has to be by electricity. In addition to that, Eversource is now charging extra money when you go to upgrade your electrical service for the items that are out in the street before you even get to your property. That's a whole new surcharge that's not even discussed in this. Please don't give our rights away to the state. Thank you very much. I'll try not to repeat myself during the next session. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, anyone online?
We do have someone coming over online. We have Chris Glottinger. Mr. Glottinger, you may unmute. You have three minutes.
Go ahead, Chris.
Oh, sorry, everyone, there's a bit of a delay. Thank you, council members. I am Chris Glottinger, a resident of Centerville. I'm the vice chair of the Infrastructure and Energy Committee. I'm also a meteorologist, and I'm a climate scientist as well. Since 1959, oil companies knew that their product would lead to serious consequences. They paid the same public relations companies that were hired by the tobacco industry to misinform the public back then, and now today, they're misinforming the public to believe that oil, coal, and gas are perfectly safe. The fossil fuel industry has a lot on the line. They hold $30 trillion in assets and are deathly afraid of the switch to renewable energy. Right now, wind and solar are cheaper than oil, coal, and gas, and battery technology is getting better every single day. Climate change should be your top issue at hand when you think of crises that are out there, healthcare crisis, a housing crisis, there's no bigger crisis than the climate crisis. Insurance companies are dropping Cape residents more and more every day. Our aging infrastructure cannot withstand the impacts of climate change, and our warming world is helping to inflate healthcare costs every year by billions of dollars. We're at a critical time. It's a time when certain people feel that their ideology and feelings weigh more than science. And as a scientist who took a major salary cut to help tackle the biggest issue of our lifetime, I chose to do this because we're getting closer to the point of no return. While the federal government is turning its back on science, it's critical that local and state government take collective action, and that's why I'm here tonight to encourage all of you council members to vote in favor of the stretch code. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further comment? Seeing none. As my custom is, I just wanted to note that we've received a number of comments via email, and they have been distributed to all of the councilors, including Tony Shepley, Matt Tagg, Lisa Nagel, Jeffrey O'Neill, Fenton Peters, Bradley Shepard, Matthew Tagg, I guess he had twice, Nolan Amelia, James Tenaglia, Tim O'Neill, Pete Sampo, Stephen and Anne-Marie Tenaglia, and Carol Young-Kleinfeld. So I just want you to be aware that your comments were distributed to the councilors. We will move on. Council response to public comment. Anyone on my right? Counselor Turkelson.
Thank you, President Tamish. I want to personally apologize to Heather Swenson that you didn't receive any communication back. As the chair of that committee, I guess I could definitely take that upon myself for every application that comes in to have a response. We rely heavily on Cindy, and in ways, she has so many tasks and touches so many pieces of paper that maybe it isn't appropriate that we expect her to do all of that communication. So I think it's something to think about. We rely on her, and we take it for granted that she's doing that work, and like I said, it's a lot of work. So I think an easy process would be to loop the chair in on every email that goes to a prospective person who's applying, so that it's easy to reply. So I really appreciate your feedback, and I will take that under consideration, and I do apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ledke.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Turkelson. I was going to say the same thing. I'm not in the Appointments Committee, but that's just standard behavior. It's polite when you apply for something. One of the times I was most happiest in the Air Force was when I got this amazing rejection letter. I had applied for something very prestigious, similar to what you said. I knew I wasn't going to get it, but I got the best letter. It was like you really read my package. I mean, it was so, it was great. So I see your point. You have to tell people, up or down, one way or the other. And also, we have so many volunteer, I'm on the committee for committees, we have so many volunteer committees, we should keep people engaged. If something doesn't work out for some reason, if there's some reason you weren't the best fit, let's keep you engaged. You came forward. So I think that's great. Thank you for speaking up. Thank you. Roberta, always a pleasure, and I love how you said stewards of the land. And Hyannis, I feel your pain. I believe Hyannis does get the short stick, always. So we have to do better by Hyannis. We absolutely have to. So I know you live in Hyannis. I know you have been a champion of that whole water system over there for literally years, and we need to do better by that water system. We absolutely do. Bob Schulte and Larry Moran, kind of similar comments in terms of transparency, and it speaks to what Heather said. We have to recognize, I always do that little pyramid thing, where the citizens of the town of Barnstable are at the top. I don't represent myself here. If I did, it'd be easy to vote, yeah, I know what I want to do, but I don't do that. That's not what we're here for. We're here to represent the people, and we need to do everything. And I know your work on that ad hoc committee was very important, and those are very good comments on the composition of the committee. And Tim and Cliff, read your letter, Tim. Thank you for coming and saying that in person. We'll have more when we get to that item. Your comments are very well taken. And again, highlighting the theme of what the other folks, it's the local. We all care about this place, and our veteran kicked us off tonight, Brian, who said he always came back here, and he did, after going everywhere else. And it's really important that we do that. But also, Chris online, if I was talking for myself, I love what he's saying. I think it's true. It's an existential threat, and we need to take it very seriously. So these are difficult, very difficult topics, and I commend every one of you for coming, writing, and speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? On my left, Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to go along with some of the other comments we heard about tonight. I think Larry and Bob about the proposed committee, I think it is very important we have public interest. We've had basically a zoning committee before that was based up in councilors, and that had some major problems that I think a lot of us know about. And I think that was caused by not having enough communications with the public and letting the public know what's going on there. So I think we've got some tweaking maybe we can do. I think it's a good idea to have this committee, but I think it could be tweaked in little ways to allow the public to have more say in what's going on. Heather, I also apologize, I'm on the Appointments Committee, but you're completely right, and I hope you will stay involved, because I think a lot of us would like to find a position for you, so, coming soon. And as for the Tim O'Neill and the other, Cliff Carroll and the others that are going to be talking later, thank you for holding your comments, and I appreciate what you've said and the interest that is coming out about the stretch code. I think that's something that's very important, that we look towards what will be the implications of that future to our community.
Thank you. Any further comment? Seeing none. Vice President Clark, would you like to just describe what we're going to be doing?
Yes, thank you very much, President Tamish. With this communications section, we're inviting two committee chairs, one from a regulatory committee and one from an advisory committee. So first up would be Farley Lewis from the Open Space Committee to give us a brief overview from what the committee does. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council members and members of the audience. My name is Farley Lewis, and I am vice chair of the Open Space Committee. I wanted to just briefly discuss what our committee has been doing lately and tell you that the Open Space Committee for this town meets monthly to discuss issues related to the acquisition and management of Barnstable's open lands. Our primary focus is to recommend land parcels that would add protection to our municipal water supply. The Open Space Committee is a fully engaged group of citizens that serves the town of Barnstable in many ways. Here's an update of our recent accomplishments and projects in progress. We are currently working with the Planning Department to update the Open Space and Recreation Plan, which gives the town access to a variety of grants. There will be a community meeting on November 19 at 6:00 p.m. to review the draft plan for all people that are interested in this. Also, our committee has just hosted a well-attended landowners forum, recorded for your reference, which lays out the benefits to landowners and town residents of preserving open space. Finally, we are charged with promoting and supporting our pathways trail system. The trailhead guide signs will begin to be installed later this year to help residents locate areas with walking trails. Also, we are working to solve private road access issues that will open up our segment of the Cape Cod pathways. We have created an online walking library, which is a menu of our town trails. And we are about to host our annual fall walking weekend, which is October 17 through 19. This is the sister to spring walking weekend. Many of these walks are led by our committee members. Please join us on our trails and enjoy the best of open space. And we have brochures for the walking weekend if everybody wants to have one, and I hope to see you out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next, we have Jake Dewey, who chairs the Zoning Board of Appeals. This is a regulatory committee for the town.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Our board is not as much fun. We don't have activities or fun things going on. We're a regulatory board.
Don't have a zoning weekend?
No, we don't have any getaways or anything going on. So the mission of the Zoning Board of Appeals is to evaluate issues presented before it, to maintain consistency with the town's zoning ordinance, and the purpose of zoning is to promote health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town, protect and conserve the value of property within the town, increase the amenities of the town, and secure safety from seasonal or periodic flooding, fire, congestion, or confusion. The board is a land use regulatory board of the town. It was created under MGL Chapter 40A, the zoning act by the state. The board hears and decides petitions brought by individuals and entities seeking land use relief as provided for in zoning act and the town's zoning ordinance. It also hears and rules on appeals taken against the decisions of administrative officials of the town with respect to zoning enforcement matters. The board is delegated to act on behalf of all local boards and committees in reviewing and issuing comprehensive permits for affordable housing pursuant to MGL Chapter 40B. So that's sort of what we do, give you a quick summary. In fiscal '24, we met 22 times, we heard 62 petitions, and we granted seven bulk variances, two use variances, two other variances, three sign variances, three modifications, and the rest were all special permits that we held. And just sort of quick makeup of our board, we're a nine-member board. We take five regular members, and then we have four associate or alternate members. We have not had any quorum issues. Right now, we have eight sitting members and one vacancy. Trying to think what else. Just a few things we've done recently. In March of '24, we updated our rules, trying to respond to constant continuances of matters that it seemed very hard for the public to keep on top of when meetings got pushed out, often six months. It would just be continuance, continuance, continuance. So we did make some rules to try to bring that back a little bit. And now we've sort of been working on possibly some updates on zoning, things that we see coming that we would like you all to give us better guidance on. One of the things is pools in the town, how we want to handle pools on small lots, and if you decide to move that subcommittee forward, we'd love to work with that committee to push different things that we see coming regularly. And just requests from the board, as we've had, Wilkins II was a pretty big task for us, and we have a 40B coming forward right now. One of the board members last night asked, is there a way we could hold some of those meetings hybrid? I don't know if that's something that is capable of doing, but both public and some of our board members would like to see some hybrid options if possible. Right now, we do choose to meet, our first meeting of the month in person, our second meeting of the month Zoom, and then we generally will, if it's something that there's a lot of public interest, we'll always continue it so that we can get people that would prefer to be here in person and people that would prefer to be on Zoom. Any questions?
Very good, thank you.
And thank you, Counselor Clark and Counselor Ledke, for coming to our meetings. I know they're not very exciting, but you've had great attendance at our meetings. Thank you.
I want to thank you and your committee. I think you're one of the committees that, if you look at what you do, you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't. Nobody is ever happy with all of your decisions, no one.
Well, that's great. The public gets very involved, which is great, that they show up and help us a lot. It's super important they stay involved. Thank you.
Okay, any further communications on the board? What's Let's get back up to, I'm sorry, was the Councilor Crowe?
Public Communications.
Sure, while we're around it.
All right. I just want to take a minute to thank the, our police chief and the Marshall Police Department officers. At the conclusion of our last town council session, I walked out to the west parking lot, the large parking lot over here, and they deployed an officer in the, that area, and I think that was a great idea, as people leave the meeting. It makes the conditions a lot more safe in leaving, and it really gives an, it gives an impression that, that the police are keeping an eye on what's going on, and I really appreciate that. Thank you for doing that, Chief.
Thank you. Okay, any further communications? Seeing none? I have a bad habit of skipping Town Manager Communications. Town Manager Communications, there is a video version of it that's posted immediately before this meeting and is visible there. It's also visible on the public access channels, and there is a written version. Some of the highlights is that the budget calendar for 2027 has been posted, believe it or not, and we are starting that process already. The town recently received its free cash certification from the Department of Revenue. Town's audit is ongoing. Part of it's been completed, the federal expenditure awards has been completed, and the main audit is ongoing. The town manager has authorized deficit spending for snow and ice. Tough to think of that already also. For fiscal year 2026, the budget for snow and ice removal is $975,000, which is the same amount budgeted in fiscal 2025. The town of Barnstable has requested the assistance of Senator Sears' office in securing the release of $1.6 million for improvements to the National Guard Armory. As you'll recall, a couple of weeks ago, we authorized right around $3 million, I believe it was, for that, and this will be some additional dollars coming from the state. The Cape Cod Commission is updating their regional policy plan, and a letter has been sent with some suggestions for changes in that plan. The proposed environmental bond bill is, it's pending in the legislature. That would have a huge effect on us and our CWMP funding, so there have been some letters sent in support of that. The block, community block program, performance evaluation has been completed, so they've had a busy couple of weeks for the town manager. So I don't know if any of the councilors have any questions on the town manager's report? Councilor Crowe?
I just have a comment to Town Manager Els and Assistant Manager Clyburn. I was very happy to see this letter that you wrote to the Cape Cod Commission, especially with regard to historic village centers and the, and the difference between what we as a community are asking for and what the committee, the Cape Cod Commission is asking for, as far as the, the, the community activity centers that they have determined in the past, that a number of the smaller villages here have been shown to be by the Cape Cod Commission as places for, for, for growth that is, at this point, that is not very popular with those villages. So I appreciate you clarifying that with the Cape Cod Commission president, and I thank you for doing that, so, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further comment on the town manager's report? Seeing none? Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of our last meeting? Been distributed to everyone? Motion made and seconded, Madam Clark.
Counselors, just a moment, please. Bloom?
Yes.
Berdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Ludkey?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn? Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yeah.
Turkelson?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. At this point, I would like to invite Davey Anthony to come forward. He's going to be updating us on special events and use of town property. There've been some concerns raised, having, living in Centerville and, you know, having the number of events that occur at Craigville Beach, there's been some concern raised about that, and that led to a little bit more of a discussion about townwide events. And David's going to update us on those events and some of the surprising effects of those events on the town. David?
Good evening, councilors. Happy to provide you with this overview of special events. The intent of this is to increase your awareness of some of the events that might happen outside of your villages specifically, but also to provide information about how they are managed, some of the impacts that they have, both direct and indirect, on staff and how staff supports these across the way. What we do is we consider special events to be a kind of a collection of an outside entity, for the most part, that comes in and uses town property to either fundraise or to increase awareness or to, in many cases, entertain the public. There are craft shows, there are all sorts of things. We group all of these together, and I think what's important tonight is to kind of identify that I will not be speaking on the schools, because the schools permit out the use of school properties themselves. They have a robust program where people can rent out classrooms and use fields. They have that pretty much in hand, and they have to balance some issues about hours of operation and children and access to the public and things along those lines. The Community Services Department manages the HYCC and the events that go on inside the HYCC, and we've worked very closely with them over the years to develop a permitting process for ice time, for gym time, for the use of some of the, some of the rooms that are there. So they manage that separately from the special events program that we have here. MEA currently sponsors 22, 23 different bass tournaments out of Week Walk at Lake, which is a challenge in and of itself, as there's lots of parking along Shoot Flying Hill Road. They manage those and they schedule those onto a town calendar. We are looking at opportunities for consistency there and also about trying to collect those and run them through the same project that we have now. Currently, MEA manages those. And finally, the airport has its own set of special events that happen inside the terminal mostly, and the airport manager manages that. So everything else that happens kind of happens under asset management and it's special events. So as we look at this, we had reference to road races. There's quite a few of those. Sometimes it seems like there's one every weekend, especially if you do live in Centerville. I also live in Centerville, and the big key indicator is when the porta-potties start to pop up on the corners of roads, you know there's something coming. But we have festivals, we have fairs, many of the villages will have specific events. Certainly, we have some very big and very successful and well-run craft fairs. Love Live Local is a great example of that. There's one that's been running for quite some time. We do see fundraisers all the time. There are a number of cancer awareness walks and fundraisers that will happen. Ironically, lately, there's been a lot more interest in environmental cleanups and beach cleanups, some ranging from 50 or 60 people or some as small as seven or eight people getting together for an hour at one of our Ways to Water or something along those lines. What we try to do is coordinate those and schedule them, and if they need town support, then we can provide it. But there's a process that we're asking them to go through, and before it was a little, it was a little loose as far as control, people would just show up and do what they needed to do. Now, as they need more town resources to support some of that, and we certainly welcome the community's support on that level, because many times it can be hard for town staff to get there as often, and that augmentation of what we do is really appreciated. Certainly parades, we see that at certain times of the year. We certainly see that around the Christmas holiday. We have holiday strolls. Ironically, have weddings that happen on town property, some right here on Town Green. The town clerk has a role in those that are local, but we see weddings and events like that, family events. We recently had somebody said, is it okay if for 10 minutes we have 50 people show up to just kind of remember a friend of ours who was at the beach? And they don't need any town services, they're just going to show up. The beaches aren't requiring any active stickers right now, so it's like, okay, as long as you don't make trash and there's no amplified music and you don't have any of those triggers, have at it. Thank you for letting us know. So the celebration of life events are important. Polar plunges, not something I'm a huge fan of myself, but there are plenty of people who will engage in those as a fundraiser. Lately, we've seen a lot more protected speech events that are happening, and the town has to work delicately with the organizers of that. And if there are questions about that later on, we can address them, but that's a whole different category of item that we are trying to work through policies and procedures on. And finally, we have the Hyannis Village Bandstand, and anyone who is here on Town Green during the summer will see that that is a very active place, everything from drumming to zumba to the town band to 35 ukuleles playing at one time, which is an experience. They actually are quite good, and it is a wonderful event. But as you can see, there's a variety of different events that happen, and this is not a recent development. A hundred years ago, you can go back into town records and you will see that at town meeting, there was voting of funds for the town band. In fact, it was very early on in the meeting. It was usually the third or fourth item on the warrant, and it happened year after year. And many times, the conditions were that you had to play at Veterans Day and you had to play Memorial Day, but they would also play concerts. Special events, the number kind of bumbled along for a while, but in the past 35 years, we've seen more and more people who want to come here to the Cape, and the town manager mentions it all the time. This is a fabulous place. We are a seasonal community. We rely on our tourist trade to come in and help support our businesses. We want to make this as inviting a place as we can, because that is an important part of our culture and our history. So when we encourage those events, we know willingly that we're inviting people to come down. Hopefully, they stay, they spend money, they come back for vacations, and the success of those events needs to support that. Over the years, we've seen fireworks displays, we've seen Fourth of July Hyannis Parade. There was a time 20 years ago when it was almost long enough that it was continuous all the way down Main Street. But events come and go. They have popularity and then they drop off. The idea that some events are 45 or 50 years in the running is pretty amazing to think that somebody can sustain that for that long. Pops by the Sea was an event that started in 1986 and with COVID ended. There's been some talk about resurrecting that with the Cape Cod Symphony. There's a host of challenges that bring that onboard, and you've lost some of the people who know how to do all of that. So in 2014, the former Consumer Affairs Division Supervisor at the time, Liz Harts Grove, who's currently the Assistant Town Manager in Bourne, she was tasked by Town Council to try to review the permitting process, because there was a realization that there was inconsistency in how we got all of those events onto one master calendar. So that you didn't have to worry about conflicts of dates or overlaps or anything along those lines. And what she came up with was a special event webpage, a guidebook, a central calendar, and a way to electronically notify all the different departments that were going to come into play, and it was a serious step forward in how we manage these special events. At that time, there's a future recommendation that there really ought to be a person, a person who was on the site, in the red jacket with the clipboard on the day of, but also did the pre and the post and worked through all of those details. And as these events get more and more complicated, you need that person to try to coordinate the unique elements of every single one of those. The Father's Day Car Show with 250 cars on Main Street, closing down all of Main Street, it's not the same as Best Buddies. It's not the same as a triathlon race. How do you deal with that? How do you deal with the Barnstable Village Christmas Stroll? Each one of these has its unique elements, and you need someone who understands the cycle of it. So the idea had been at that time, let's dedicate someone to that. Cost evaluations were done, and they found that if you did a full cost recovery on every one of these events by trying to charge for all of the people who were involved, it could be anywhere from $2,500 to $3,000 per event. But many of that happens by, many of the things that happen there are employees during their regular time. But what we tried to do was capture and put a number with that, because we thought that that would be helpful to try to give some perspective, and back then, we were counting 50 to 60 events. Fees were raised slightly. There was a time when regardless of what you did on Town Green, you paid $43 a day. That was Pops by the Sea, that was the Ukulele Club. Two very different levels of impact on Town Green, and yet the fees were the same, but that was what was thought to be fair across the board, everybody plays by the same rules. The fee schedule has been updated a couple of times, but if you were going to go for cost recovery, we are lagging quite behind, but there may be, there may be an understanding that this is part of our culture, this is what we want to do, we want to bring these people here. So there's that economic benefit that comes in that is difficult to measure, but we all acknowledge that it's there. I do want to acknowledge that Grace Rogers, who for the past three years worked for me, did a lot of work to update this. We transferred into Open Gov, which is our new platform online, so that there's a familiarity. She has taken a position with the procurement department, so I'm currently down a person, and I'm learning more about special events and the nuances of permitting than I ever thought I would want to, but I have to be honest, it has been an education about how departments interact with each other, and it's been great. So as we look at this, what we're trying to do is create a permitting process that is appropriate. If you're going to have someone do a beach cleanup, and they have to go through 27 different steps in order to do a beach cleanup, and simply, you know, the checks are all there and it has to move to somebody's cue box, and then they have to approve it and let it go, that may be overkill. So now what we've done is we've standardized, and now I'm thinking we're going to retreat from that and create some streamlined process to allow some of the smaller events to be able to move through more quickly, the ones that don't use town resources. But I think it's been a good exercise to get to this point where now we can take a measured step back. So as we work through this, there are a lot of challenges that go along with any kind of an event. First of all, we have a town calendar that needs to be improved. It's a software, it's also an input issue, and we've identified that as a choke point. It's not easy to find out what's happening on Town Green next Tuesday night. We need to do that so that the public is informed, and it also helps promote some of these events. It would also be helpful if you are going to be in Centerville on the weekend of a triathlon, and you don't notice the porta-potties, to be able to kind of know that there's something coming, and now that we have this robust communications department that sends out these push notices and texts and things along those lines, we can coordinate that information and help the public understand what's happening. So as you're driving down Main Street in Centerville and you come across one of those white and orange barriers, you know why that's happening. This will allow us to identify the size and duration of some of these events. Best Buddies is a big-time event, it brings a lot of people into the neighborhood, it has a serious impact on that section of town for a very brief period of time. People will want to know that. There are certain town resources that we have to make available, and some of those town resources are becoming more and more challenging to sustain. Trash pickup is a very expensive prospect, and what we have chosen to do is work with DPW to identify where the break-even point, where can we handle that with existing staff, and where do we need to encourage these events to go out and contract with an outside trash hauler to bring personnel and buckets and disposal services into the mix. Tents are an important aspect. As the regulations start to go up on the use of tents, we need to make sure that flame spread certificates and all of the safety features that go with that, we have in our inspectional services division, someone who does that, but what we have to do is encourage people who are going to use tents to use them appropriately. Food trucks have become a big deal, and what we're seeing more and more is a more robust list of food trucks, and that's becoming an efficient way to provide food services, especially here on Town Green. And I will say, DPW's been very actively working with the asset management department now to try to create a, an identified spot on Town Green where it's appropriate to have food trucks. The problem we have is that this Town Green, it's beautiful, gorgeous grass, there's an irrigation system that's underneath there, and when you bring in a heavy-duty truck and you drive across that irrigation system, you crush the pipes and then you can't, you can't keep the grass beautiful anymore. So what we're trying to do is dedicate a couple of sections of Town Green just for food trucks to make sure that that's the appropriate place, and it becomes easier to enforce where they are and where they won't be. enforce where they are and where they won't be. Use of propane is certainly a public safety issue. The Hyannis Fire Department specifically and all the other fire departments have rules and regulations associated with that. And what we try to do is make sure that they are included in all of this permitting to make sure that it's done right. Open flames, we could lead to a tragedy and that's the thing we're trying to avoid the most. Electricity on site, uh, is a, is a challenge here on Town Green and in other locations, there's a limited amount and people just keep plugging things in and then the breaker pops. And many times we need to then have the electrician show up and it happens to be on a Saturday or a Sunday or something like that. It can be, can be a real challenge. So, uh, we have all of those. But road closure permits are a problem for some, for some communities because if the notice doesn't go out, people don't know how to get around. We, uh, we had a priest, uh, who called and complained in Latin. He was so upset because he couldn't get to mass. Um, I can appreciate that and notice needs to go out to the churches when they're going to be impacted. Our Lady of Victory is certainly one in Centerville that's sensitive to these events and we make sure that that information goes out. Um, signage is a big issue. There are rules and regulations around signage and as a piece of that, we've got the banners that go across Main Street. I did not realize that there's, uh, last year we had 22 different banners that went across Main Street and there's a two hour put it up and a two hour take it down for two guys in a bucket truck in order to do that. That gets absorbed. We don't, that, that gets absorbed by DPW on either overtime or on regular time. And many times they do it on overtime because it blocks a lane on Main Street. And finally, we have, um, event safety. This is becoming a much bigger issue. We see this in the national news. We start to see that where people gather together, sometimes people will try to make a point or try to make a statement and disrupt those events. And what we need to do is work very closely. Peter Burke has been tremendous. Our police department has been tremendous here for most of the events in Hyannis to work through the special events and the safety protocols, even to the point where when we block off the streets, we're putting heavy duty equipment at either end of the blocked street. You have to be able to move it in case an ambulance gets in, which means you need to have someone with a CDL license who's there, who's able to move that. So there are some layers to all of this that goes along. So people that ask, what are, what are we talking about as far as numbers? And I think anytime we start talking about this, um, 115 special events is, is what we are counting. Those are outside groups that are coming onto town property to use those. That does not include the ones that are quote unquote town sponsored. Uh, Unity Day, Unity Day, for example, is one. Um, we have a couple of other Sturgis events that happen out here on Town Green because they're educationally related. We don't necessarily, um, call those special events, but they do need to be put on the calendar. So we had 115 special events in 2024. As far as fees went, we collected $15,000 worth of revenue. You can see the breakout by village, um, with a heavy emphasis on the two open spaces that are here in Hyannis. Azleton Park and Town Green get the brunt of those special events, but they're beautiful places and they're some of the only open green spaces that we have in Hyannis and they are heavily used. Similarly, uh, for 2025, uh, we have 106 special events through September 3rd. We've had another 10 come in since September 3rd. Um, and it looks like we're on projections to collect about 12 to $13,000 worth of fees directly. So as we start to take a look at this, one of the things that we chose to do was ask police department, DPW, MEA, some of these other departments, how do you carry these costs to support these events within your budgets? Can you identify hours of operation? And I think it's shocking to see that as part of what our departments do on a regular basis, they help support these special events. In some cases, um, you, you'll see that it's a rather substantial number depending on the number. 2022 was, uh, coming out of COVID. I think there were an awful lot, there was pent up energy. Uh, I think people wanted to have a lot of outdoor events, so we saw a lot more of that. Um, we call these hidden costs because DPW carries an overtime budget, the police department carries an overtime budget, and that overtime many times will go to help support these special events. Again, taking that idea that what we're trying to do is invite the public here to enjoy this special place that we have in the hopes that they will bring economic development, they will become future homeowners, they will come to the beaches, they will vacation here. Um, but these are just some of the numbers that we carry that we were able to identify through a pricing exercise to see where overtime was being spent on special events and where overtime was being spent on other things within those departments. So we're carrying this as we go. Um, so as far as our strategic direction goes, and this is, this is where I think the town council can chime in and really give us some of that strategic direction. Do we want to continue to maintain the size and nature of these events as we move forward? We are asked all the time if we will host other events. And there are times when we simply can't do it because it, they all want the same weekend and you can't have five events on the same Saturday because it paralyzes the entire town. So one of the thoughts has been, do we try to work with people to try to move them to other times of the year? Or are we going to create a saturation point where we say, we have enough now, we'll put you on a waiting list and once something else opens up, we'll give you that slot. But these impacts on our community are real. Road closures create challenges for drivers. Um, they create challenges for residents and if people don't know about them, it, it can really impact them. Um, we have a lot of competition for Town Green and Azleton Park. Uh, we will have weddings, uh, receptions, we have graduation events. Sturgis puts up a big tent in Azleton to do their graduation. That's three or four days that blocks it out for any other events that are going to come along. Sometimes you will have to stack them and you have an hour of downtime between the next event that's going to happen on Town Green. Is that enough time for staff to be able to deal with all that? And finally, necessary resources. Uh, if you were going to do that Pops by the Sea or fireworks or you're going to do Best Buddies, you're going to have some of those bigger events, there's pre-meetings beforehand, there's post-meetings afterwards to kind of talk about what goes wrong, if anything did go wrong. And occasionally we get some new things that have gone wrong and new challenges that are, that, that come up. So as we wrap this up, um, these are our short-term goals for special events. Um, once we're properly staffed, I think this is going to be a little bit easier to kind of maintain the pace. We're going to update the use of Town of Property Guidebook. It does need to be updated. I think some of the information in there has aged a little bit. We're going to look into how we can come up with a strategy to manage the number of events per month, per week and on the weekend so that what we're not going to do is exercise the stra, the, the staff or put an extra burden on, um, public safety. We're looking at adopting something that Boston does, which is tiering their events. The bigger events, the Best Buddies, the Father's Day Car Show, those are kind of your tier one events that really require a lot of support. Your bottom events are going to be eight or 10 people out at Scudder Lane who are going to do a one hour beach cleanup and take everything with them. We're going to handle those as two different ones and potentially look into streamlining our permitting. Um, we're going to enhance some of our pre-event and post-event meetings to take into account some of the public safety issues that are starting to come up, coming up with those unfortunate catastrophic plans so that if there ever was something that was going to go wrong, we needed to make sure that we were ready for it and we'd thought about those things. Um, we have the resources in-house in here. Peter Burke, again with Hyannis Fire Department has been terrific. He's done some coursework on this and he's been helping us with that. Um, we're going to examine resetting fees, but there's a, there's a challenge with this. If you're going to charge a, if MLS is going to have a road race and they leave here, how much is reasonable to charge them for the use of Town Green for an hour when they have two folding tables and a tent and they're gone in 10 minutes? And they're basically parking in a public parking lot in the off season? What's an appropriate amount of fee to do recovery on that as opposed to, um, Cape Cod Symphony is going to be out here and do a free concert and they're going to have a tent and we're going to have all kinds of food vendors and things like that? How do we reset those fees so it's realistic? And what we don't do is we, we don't want to penalize the not-for-profits that are fundraising for their goals, but at the same time, we need to recognize what the impact is going to be. And finally, what we're going to do, um, with the vacancy and asset management is we're going to, um, make that special events person a bit more robust and actually give them some on the, on the day of event, um, responsibilities so that there will be someone here on the ground who is there. Cause unfortunately Troy Perry and the police department and the traffic division, many time he's there, he has the uniform on and people, when there's a problem, go and seek him out. And he's not the electrician and he's not the parking guy. Uh, so, uh, we're going to try to address some of these deficiencies. Um, so again, this is meant to bring an awareness of special events that are happening here. You may all be familiar with the events that happen in your particular precincts or in your particular villages that kind of happen. Um, and you may not know about all the other events that are happening. Uh, certainly you hear about them in communications, but, um, certainly willing to answer any questions that you have on this, but these are our plans moving forward and I thank you for the opportunity, sir.
Thank you. As I said, part of the genesis of this were some of the issues in primarily in that Craigville Beach area with the number of triathlons and races and Best Buddies and all that sort of thing going on down there with the road closures, uh, that extend up to, to Route 28 and West Main Street and, and all that. And, you know, you, you, you hear anecdotally people saying they, they go around and around the circuit because they can't get home because all the streets are closed. And, uh, you know, each individual traffic control point is doing the right thing, but there's no mechanism to get people through. That, that's one of the concerns I had. The, the second is, uh, how much revenue, and you didn't mention this, how much revenue is lost to the beaches and, and do we look for reimbursement of that when, again, not to pick on Best Buddies, but for the triathlon, when they take over Craigville Beach, a significant portion of the parking lot for a day, two days, perhaps even three days? And, uh, you know, we're losing that revenue for those people that perhaps could be going in there. You know, along the same lines with Best Buddy, I, I do want to give a shout out to the, uh, Barnstable Police Department and ComFire for last summer, when that sudden windstorm came up and that tent that Best Buddies had erected was in danger of going down. And, uh, you know, they did a fantastic job getting people out of there and, uh, stabilizing that situation, so.
If you'd like, sir, I can address some of the Best Buddies, uh, the fee issues. Um, that certainly was an issue and there was a recent change in the town manager's fees for the use of that lot while in season and out of season. So there is some cost recovery and it is based on lost parking revenue associated with that lot when Best Buddies is there or any other in-season use. We found that there was no out of season fee associated with the use of, of that parking lot either. Now, you know, one would say, what's the big deal? It's out of season, you're not collecting anything anyway, but there's an inconvenience factor that would go. And in order to standardize that, recreation collects fees on that. For Best Buddies specifically, where they set that big tent up, which is across the street from Craigville Beach, that is a lot that is owned, it's privately owned. And they make that lot available to the town of Barnstable for a nominal fee and we use that for overflow parking. For a number of summers, that has been to our benefit because we were able to collect parking fees for the use of that and it exceeds what Best Buddies would charge us, uh, for the rent of that lot. So so far that has become a plus side for us and Best Buddies as an event is well-run. They, they are very accommodating. We've had a number of nearby abutters who have had some challenges and they have tried to work with those people individually. Um, I think as an example, we've been able to tweak that and actually move that closer to a break even or a fee recovery, uh, specifically, but that's been a recent development.
Yeah, I wasn't picking on Best Buddies.
No, 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 but it was a great example.
They are one of the most visible.
Yep.
Uh, any comment on my left? All right. Council Lucky.
Yeah, thank you for this presentation. It's really good and I like all your next steps. I think you've laid it out very nicely. I think the full-time position is absolutely something that needs to be pursued. And I for one, every bike race and every road race, they always go by my house, which is fine because it's gorgeous. So, uh, I would encourage this. I, I absolutely encourage it. Um, I understand what you're saying, that we, we lose some, some money, if you will, if you want to just put it, but what we gain as a community, I think far exceeds that. And it's sometimes it's hard to understand those kind of soft gains when you're just trying to attach hard numbers to it. But I think the soft gains far exceed, uh, any of these numbers you put up here and it's well worth, uh, I think almost enhancing this. And thank you for mentioning the other entities, you know, the airport, the schools. I know when the schools were here, um, there were quite a few counselors that were adamant that that's, those schools better get their butts in gear and start charging money for their facilities and stuff and it was a little bit hostile. So, um, you know, every, we can monetize what we can, but let's, let's not get in, let's not be greedy because what we have is amazing and it's nice to share. And I think what you say, people come back because they appreciate the beauty and, uh, you know, kind of the, the gentle, gentler approach. That'd be my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Council Kirkerson.
Thank you for that presentation. I'm probably the opposite end of, of, um, Council Lucky's statement. You know, we talk a lot about how much money we need to gain and increase revenue to keep, you know, our services level and it's kind of like a slow leak. This seems like a slow leak to me. And I'm not saying we need to gouge people, but, and I don't know how live love local works and, or maybe we have a craft fair on the green and we have many, many vendors coming. I don't know how that's run. I'm assuming that if you're a vendor out here, that you're probably paying a fee to be a vendor there, to be able to set up a tent. So, um, you know, I, I think it needs thoughtful consideration because, you know, $330,000 of extra fees that we just can, you know, off the top kind of think about, there might be other fees that we, other places where we have staff working that we haven't been able to even put into those costs. I think it's important because that might be money that we don't have somewhere else for, for our searing, for our other projects, um, for our safety, for our fire. Um, you know, I mean, we don't, we have a deficit in those resources already and this contributes to that. It, it's asking for our resources and I think, you know, thinking about how can we do that in a tiered way is important because like you say, if it's a small event versus we have the whole green taken up or the whole Azleton Park taken up, you know, there are lots of variety in this, so I, I don't relish the work ahead of you, but, um, I, I think it needs to be looked at because I think, you know, if we want to keep having more and more events, it will escalate. I mean, I don't know how Provincetown handles it. I mean, I think one of the amazing things about Provincetown is they have an event every weekend from January to December. It's pretty amazing.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I don't know if there's some knowledge to be gained there from looking at a community that has a robust, you know, mechanism where they have a festival of some sort every weekend. You know, how are they monetizing that or, or, you know, helping with fees and stuff to, to recover so that they have police and fire and those kinds of things? It might be something to look at, but I appreciate the work ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay. One thing that kind of popped into my head when we were just talking about fees is the, do we have a policy on fee waivers? Now, every organization really, uh, I think feels justified in saying, can you, can you waive the fees for us because we're, we're a nonprofit, we're a charity, we're doing this, we're doing that, we're raising money for this and that. Is there a policy on that?
Um, the policy has generally been to kick the request over to the town manager and let him decide.
The buck stops here.
It's a pretty easy policy for me. I used to say, is this okay? Um, so I, seeing as he's here next to me, I'll let him answer that question.
Thank you.
Good evening, Markell's Town Manager. Thank you for, um, for, um, allowing us to do this workshop and, um, you know, it's, it's, it's an interesting challenge. I think that, and if I go back to this slide, I, I think if we had a direct question for the council to consider, it's the difference between the revenue collected and the carrying costs that we're incurring. In general, this wasn't budgeted, though we have overtime budgets. That's our challenge. We're a destination. People want to come here and enjoy the people who live here. Now we got to do it, well, I live in Centerville too and all those races go right by my house and, you know, I stood for 20 years and cheered for George Benton, the sprint and every other athlete. So it is wonderful that they're there, but it comes with a cost. So the hope of tonight was not only to give the good overview that David just provided, Andy and Dave have worked on this together, but to Andy and Dave have worked on this together, but to really ask the town council to think about how we're going to sustain this. I mean, as events, we have a celebrations account with $185,000 a year, and that's really just for what was the fireworks. So we're not spending that money now, but, you know, if we don't spend it, it goes back for future appropriation, though we are looking to try to do things like land-based fireworks for the future, parades, and Unity Day. That's just those three for $185,000. Then we look at the difference between how many events we have and what it costs versus what we collect. Now, we want to offer these. If we jump back to our workshop, and I know it was late last council meeting, but I think that the plan that Mark Milne and I were sharing with you, relevant to our future finances, would illustrate that this is something that we need to have an ongoing dialogue if we want to continue. Okay? So the hope of tonight, from my standpoint, and I'll answer your question about waves and waving in a minute, but is that we continue that discussion because this isn't sustainable when we have, these are discretionary, not nondiscretionary. And other complications are, many times, events and the number of people who participated have grown dramatically. I think social media helps to let everybody know where something is going on, even though somehow they don't know about the road races, Craig. I don't know how that happens, but they certainly do know when there's a gathering down on Long Beach, or they certainly know when there's a stroll and many other events. We have thousands of people now showing up. I've lived where I've lived for almost 40 years, and I used to go to the Old Home Week, and it's really expanded in the number that show up at Craigville Beach for that event on the beach at night. That puts further demands in how we plan for that, in what role our public safety people need to play in that, in what they're able to do at those sorts of events. So I share this only because this is what we wrestle with every day. We want it to occur. We want to have the funding, and to do that, we need to have you involved. Relevant to fees, quite honestly, this discrepancy between what we actually collect and what it costs us, our focus hasn't been to collect fees equal to cost. So we waive fees regularly. That's all I can say to you. Just had the request. You were standing with me when someone came in and said, can you waive the fee for this wonderful event for our high school? We didn't answer because we wanted to have this meeting tonight. So I think that we need to continue this discussion. You see the difference when we get into what Mark Milne presented in the budget workshop. These will be the difficult discussions about non, rather discretionary expenses that if we need to relook at how we use our budget, will come under discussion. Okay? So I don't know if I need to say more. So I waive, it falls with me, the fees that gets that fall, the town manager, the fees that gets that fall with the town manager in this case. And when people come to me, I quite honestly look at if they're for-profit or not-for-profit, if they're municipal versus, you know, other. And in most, open streets, waive the fees. Rolling rally, waive the fees. I mean, we could keep going down the list. Okay? Maybe there's a donor out there who would say, oh, I'll do that. Okay, but I don't get to solicit those funds. I can't ask for somebody to do that. So then somebody has to be their advocate in that process. So thank you for listening, but this is becoming more of a challenge, both because of the demand for it, but also, you know, the costs are not inexpensive. We're also limited in our workforce, and that isn't going away. Okay? It really isn't. And so how we allocate our resources during these events, which are also a lot of times, there's a lot else, certainly summertime, our police and our public works are flat-out busy, shoulder seasons now, busy, holiday seasons now, busy. So it's a challenge, and we need your help so that we do this the way the community wants to see it, you know, provided in Barnstable.
Thank you. Any further?
I'll be brief. I just have one question. So what, in other municipalities of similar size and scale to ours, what do you know about how they handle these things?
It's all over the place. They have, well, Lynn's here, and Lynn can tell you the history of things like fireworks and, you know, parades and who paid for it. And ultimately, it didn't start as the town, but the entities that were involved stopped, and the community wanted it. So I think at some point, they created the celebration account to keep those events going. So it varies, Seth. It's all over the place, and it's very different. I can get P-Towns, I can call up the town manager, I'm sure this, you know, tomorrow or next week, and tell you what they do and how they do it and what sort of fee structure they have. But again, it varies significantly. And it'll come back to a discussion with council because how do you want to do this? Is this part of the fabric of who we are, and you want to see this occurring? And you want to engage our youth? And, you know, sometimes even 10 bucks might be too much for certain youth to be able to attend. So how do we want to do this? And, you know, I don't, you know, yes, I guess I could make these decisions alone, but I don't know that it'll be a decision that will be representative necessarily. So I'd love to hear from you on this, maybe part of even strategic planning to think about how we want to do this in the future. Okay? And do it right. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Now that I'm thinking about it, I have a lot of questions, but are we going to have, will we have, we'll have another discussion about this at some point? And as a corollary to that, you know, how many, I'm just curious, and these are things, again, for that discussion, what are the best practices that we may be able to grasp on from other communities and how they approach this? Because I can imagine there's other municipalities of a similar size or much larger that run into this, and they must have some system for it. And what percentage of the events, like with the breakdown between nonprofits and for-profits, you know, all that stuff? I mean, as I said, now that I'm thinking about it, I have a lot of questions, but we'll discuss it, but those are some of the things that I would like to hear.
And we need that strategic vision, that longer-term vision from the council of what we want to be relevant to this. It's so important. Because right now, the primary focus, nobody's looking at the dollars, except now that we've put them up, people are going to ask, but it's traffic. That's the biggest thing we hear about traffic. And then sometimes numbers of people, wow, it was 2,000 people, not the, as I remember, it used to be maybe 600. We hear that a lot, but definitely traffic is the biggest concern when people's lives are interrupted. I mean, look at what, I'll throw it out there, but we've looked a lot at what, like Hampton Beach did. They were able to expand their celebratory season into the shoulder season. They put up a half shell. They have entertain men. People go there. I've talked to the town managers up there. It's created a real shoulder industry for rental of properties, especially along that boulevard. So, but, but do you all want to do that? Is that the vision that you have? And that's really a critical role that the town council has played, and we're asking you to continue to play it. We can get that detailed, Seth. We can go in there and say, okay, how does Salem deal with, you know, Halloween, or how does, you know, we can City of Boston do whatever event may be occurring there, a New Bedford on an issue, or anywhere, anywhere in the Commonwealth or beyond. But again, we have looked at this, and a lot of it comes from our community. Certainly, you are the front line for our community, and then I work for you. So I need that feedback. What do you want to be? Where do you want us to go? And then how are we going to pay for it?
Thank you. Council Turkelson?
Thank you. One last question. Are we tracking how many, I mean, and literally, I don't expect you to say yes. We've waived $10,000 in fees. That's not going to solve this problem. I mean, we know the delta of 8,500 to 312,000. So I'm not trying to expect that that's going to solve it. I'm just curious if we track how many fees we are waiving, just to have an idea, you know, and is it, you know...
No, but I could calculate it quick. We can look at the, the events are recorded, and then the fee not, because every time, Dave Anthony doesn't, I'm the only one who has, or the town manager, it's me right now, only has that authority. So staff doesn't get to do that. In every event, they have needed to come to the town manager to ask for the fee to be waived. So, yeah, we could replicate that and just say, nope, we didn't charge them anything. But I can tell you who it is. It's all of the local stuff that goes on in Barnstable, especially related to kids and especially related to, you know, just very local events. Takes up a lot of time, a lot of effort, and, you know.
I just think that data is important because that is going to, you know, when Council Lutke speaks of the fabric of the community, you know, that data supports the fabric of the community in where are we as a council and as a community willing to say we're going to make a line item in the budget for, you know, $350,000 every year, and it's going to be earmarked for this purpose and these kinds of things, and there's a process and all of the things that you're working on. So I think the data is important to know what has been waived traditionally, experientially, because that will inform the feel-goodness of what we decide against the financials. That's the challenging part.
Absolutely, and we can try to quantify as accurately as we can to address that. I think more broadly, too, the recognition that when these occur, and given our standing workforce, we may not be able to accommodate everything we want to accomplish. So then we begin to say to ourselves, okay, what's the priorities? And by tiering it, I think David and others, Andy and others, have begun to put that into categories, and then we can have those discussions. But as events grow, one of the things, there's a limit on the, when you need to pay for trash, if it's over so many people, then you need to pay for your trash. And that's thousands of dollars typically. And so people are putting on their applications less than that threshold, but they have five times that showing up, and we know that. So we really need to flush this out, and you all need to hear this. I mean, Centerville Old Home Week was a great example of that this year. We all wanted it to happen, but there was a lot of stuff that was evolving as we were going through the review of that occurring. And it's not to, I live in Centerville, so that's what happened, but that happens in every village. We need to have frank conversations about how we're going to do this.
Thank you. Any further questions, discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I would like to thank Assistant Town Manager Clyburn and Dave Anthony for the work that they did putting in. Thank you. We are going to take a quick break because I know the stretch code may go on for a while and the discussion on that. So we will adjourn for, take a break for 10 minutes or so.
Obviously, we're talking about this evening. Town of Barnstable has not adopted the stretch code. We did have that conversation a few years ago, and it did not pass. While we're talking about it this evening, there has been discussions by this council to adopt or become a green community. This is one criteria of becoming a green community. Two hundred ninety-seven of the three hundred fifty-one Massachusetts cities and towns are green communities. Just recently, our neighbors in 2024 Sandwich, Town of Sandwich, became a green community. To become designated as a green community, there are five criteria. Number one, as-of-right zoning. Pass zoning in designated locations for as-of-right citing of renewable alternative energy generating facilities. We believe we already meet this requirement with our large ground-mounted solar overlay district where we have by-right zoning. Generally, those districts are the airport and the land, the transfer station. Expedited process and permitting. Adopt an expedited process and permitting of one year at most under which facilities interested in locating their facility and designate a renewable zone may be cited within a municipality. Again, we believe we meet this requirement with our by-right zoning for large ground-mounted solar in those areas I've mentioned. Energy use baseline inventory. Establish an energy use baseline inventory for municipal buildings, the facilities, street and traffic lighting, and vehicles, and adopt an energy reduction plan demonstrating a reduction of twenty percent of energy use after five years of implementation. As I just mentioned earlier, this discussion took place approximately two years ago with the council. Staff did do a lot of work to establish this baseline inventory. Our sustainability manager has continued to develop that out, and we feel confident we would be able to complete this task to become a green community. Fourth is fuel-efficient vehicles for municipal use. It requires all departments within a green community to purchase fuel-efficient vehicles for municipal use whenever such vehicles are commercially available and practical. We have been ongoing in updating our fleets and looking for fuel-efficiency vehicles and opportunities to purchase fuel-efficient vehicles through grants and other opportunities when they become available. And lastly, adopt the stretch code. So if we are to become a green community, municipalities shall adopt the stretch code. That is the question before you tonight, whether or not Barnstable wishes to become or wishes to adopt this stretch energy code. Again, for the green communities, some of the benefits stated by the Commonwealth that if you become designated as a green community reduces municipal energy costs, assess access to grants for clean, affordable, and resilient energy projects, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and promote energy-efficient building construction. Now, the Town of Barnstable proposed stretch code zoning amendment. We provide to you in full and in your package and in the agenda, obviously, drafted with cooperation and assistance from our town attorneys. We started with the model ordinance that is provided by the Commonwealth and amended it accordingly to fit the Town of Barnstable. Essentially, it simply states that we would be adopting the stretch energy code, and that effective date would be January 1, 2026. Now, there's differences between the base and stretch code. Our, again, our building commissioner is here if we would like to have questions and comments on that. But before we get to that, if it's okay with the Town Council President, I would like to ask for the Infrastructure and Energy Committee member Barry Shingold to come up, and he had a few comments he would like to discuss.
Certainly, Mr. Shingold.
Thank you. Good evening. Before I start, I would like to say that we had a workshop back in March. We had seven presenters, including two from DOER. They are both here present remotely, so if you have questions, Lisa Sullivan from DOER and Michael Rossi, who's DOER's technical consultant. You know, as was said before, the reason the town hasn't become a green community because it didn't pass the stretch code when it came up before, the last time four years ago, when there was a tie vote. Barnstable is the only town in the Cape and Islands not to pass the stretch code or the more stringent specialized opt-in code. And as a result, we're the only town that is not a green community. I'd like to just sort of amplify a bit about the benefits of being a green community. There's state grant money for municipal energy efficiency and decarbonization projects, initially a $220,000 grant, as well as technical assistance. The state subsidizes energy efficiency improvements, and there are cost reductions over many years. This is for municipal facilities. There are health benefits through ventilation requirements and incentivizing electrification in the stretch code, as well as in potential HVAC improvements in public buildings enabled by green communities' money. It helps fight climate change and advances the town's 2020 policy to eliminate greenhouse gas emissions where feasible, and it does so in a way that is financially beneficial for the town and its taxpayers. So what about the stretch code? Well, the stretch code is generally limited in its application to new construction and major additions. This represents a small fraction of all housing, but it helps over time to make housing more energy efficient and reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. Both the base code, which the town uses, and the stretch code are based on the International Energy Conservation Code, which is a model energy efficiency code, and that gets updated every three years. Then the code is subject to revision by DOER to make it applicable to Massachusetts. So both the base code and the stretch code may change every three years. The code provisions for both are determined at the state level, but they're both administered at the local level by our building inspector. So I wanted to just clarify that. There have been discussions about what's state and what's local, but the codes are determined, whatever they are, on the state level, then they're administered at the local level. If the town determines, if it adopts the stretch code, but determines it doesn't like a future revision, or it doesn't like the way it's been, it turns out, it can exit the stretch code and the green communities' program by a town council decision to revoke the ordinance. That would be rare. Only four of the roughly three hundred communities in Massachusetts that have adopted the stretch code have done this. Ninety-nine percent of the municipalities have stayed with the stretch code over time. Since we held the workshop in March, there have been several developments that affect the economics of using heat pumps under the stretch code compared with gas under the base code. This is an important comparison because it's easier to comply with the stretch code with electric heat pumps than with the gas. I shared this with you in two letters that I sent, one in July and one that I sent last Friday. The first major development has been the Department of Public Utilities' actions to reduce electric rates for heat pump users, the first of which goes into effect next month with a, and then there's a proceeding pending to consider even further rate reductions for the next heating season. These rates are designed to make utility costs less for heat pump users compared to gas in most cases. Eversource's rates for the six upcoming winter months will be reduced by 7.4 cents per kilowatt-hour with an estimated savings over the winter of $540. This is from the Department of Public Utilities. The reduced electricity costs may be even greater if we have normal temperatures. Last winter, temperatures were significantly colder than normal, about 3.4 degrees over the three coldest winter months of December through February, which, when you added that with high electricity rates, produced the very high electricity costs of last winter. The second major development from the DPU is a proposed policy to charge the cost for gas line extensions for new gas services to new gas customers, which in the past, actually up to now, it's been largely placed on all gas customers. With implementation of this policy and with the MassSave incentives for heat pump users, there should be a cost advantage for heat pump users for new construction under the stretch code. And even without this new policy and just considering the MassSave incentives, the cost definitely, the cost differential is basically a wash, or maybe even a net positive for heat pumps under the stretch code. Having said this, the stretch code does not prohibit using natural gas if the builder or customer wants it. What the stretch code does is encourage the use of efficient electric heat pumps to promote decarbonization consistent with the Commonwealth's climate targets. And HERS ratings is a feature of the stretch code. Houses must be designed to achieve a specified energy efficiency rating under the stretch code. So based on my research and discussions, here's what I learned. A home builder told me that his HERS raider provided important input in making design and purchase decisions that allows him to comply with the stretch code and obtain MassSave incentives in a way that minimizes his cost, his net cost, what Mr. Mizzola, a HERS raider who spoke at the workshop, called value engineering, and he's also present tonight. Mr. Mizzola said in the last few years, he's done dozens of HERS ratings in the Town of Barnstable, which are not required under the base code. I think that speaks both to the value of the service he provides to builders and their customers, and the fact that builders are used to working with HERS raiders on the Cape. The HERS system is well-established. I spoke with the representative of Governmental Affairs for the State Home Builders Association at the time when the DOER had proposed amending the stretch code rules to make them more lenient, flexible, and to limit their scope. And I asked him what he thought about HERS raiders and HERS rating, and basically, he said he didn't think it presented any issues from the standpoint of the Home Builders Association. And when the Home Builders Association provided public comments, you know, first, and I had mentioned this at the workshop, they praised DOER for the effectiveness, practicality, and clarity of the code amendments and their openness to addressing stated concerns from builders and others. And second, the only changes they suggested were minimal. One was accepted by DOER, and the other was admittedly minor, having to do with the points for embodied carbon. If they had more problems with the stretch code, they would have asked for more changes. I want to add that Peter Doyle, who served our town managing the waste treatment facility for many years, and then spent many years in our committee, including his chair, had expressed a strong desire to our committee for Barnstable to become a green community before he passed away from ALS last year. And I, so I mentioned this to honor Peter. So I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, we're going back to the question at hand, which is, shall the Town of Barnstable adopt the stretch code? In the audience tonight, you have a number of different individuals that can help answer any questions. Again, our building commissioner is present. As Mr. Shingold mentioned, there's a few individuals from the DOER here and green communities that can help answer any questions. And then, obviously, as you heard early on tonight, we have a number of people in the public that could certainly help address some of these questions as well. So happy to answer any questions or help field questions.
Okay. Thank you. What I'd like to do now is open it to public comment. Once again, please limit your comments to three minutes and identify yourself.
Roberta Mock, AD Greenwood, Hyannis. I'm greatly affected with this. I have a small cottage with gas. It's going to be hard for me to get parts for my Glenwood, it's like a Glenwood stove that heats my little cottage. And I was planning on adding gas heat when I converted. I'm going to use the word corruption again, and due diligence, I want to add, and comment about our neighbor Thalmouth with this football field, seven-foot football field-sized solar farm that's going in in Kunamesset. I'll be talking with the Wampenok tribe about that Monday when he returns. Green is a scam. I work in finance, and I've done some due diligence about Pure Sky. That's a, they're LLCs, started up in Canada. What they did is, it has to do with this. It does, please. It really does. Okay, please, don't take away from my three minutes, please. Thank you. Okay. I've done a lot of studying to go, well, who are these people? Well, they're not from our country. They're from, it's a global, and the baddest actor, I think, is the one from Australia, Palisades. What the solar farm did is they spun off, and they went around to all the butters of Kunamesset, not once, but so many times. That's why there's no public comment for that three-hour meeting on September 11th. There's a lot of corruption going on. We need to do our due diligence because that Australian company, LLC, and the one from Toronto are bad actors, and we need to protect our town because there's a lot of corruption going on. And they were successful because I went to the Kunamesset farm, and he told me, Ron, that they went around to all the butters, and they silenced them by saying.
Roberta, could you just keep your comments to the stretch code and what we're just asking tonight?
It has to do with the stretch code because if we don't vote no for the stretch code, we're getting told that it's green energy, but it's really, they make the money on finance on the transmission lines. It's not green. It's not, it's not green. It's, and I have more information about what's going on in Amherst. It's called smart solar, amherst.org. Look it up, and you'll see what's coming to Cape Cod. They stopped doing it there. We have to be careful. They're hiding under the name green. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Roberta. Any further public comment?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ella Sampu. I am from Precinct 11, and I'm here tonight because I'm a young person who's inheriting this planet. I'm young by Cape Cod standards. I'll admit to being almost thirty-one, but I do work with youth climate activists, so I am regularly engaging with young people in our town. According to Cape Cod Commission data, thirty-nine percent of greenhouse gases on this peninsula come from the energy that is burned to heat and cool our homes and our commercial buildings. At least eighty-four percent of our energy comes from gas and oil, both of which emit 10.7 million tons of CO2 every year. It goes up to 14 million tons if you include propane. As much as I love swimming at Sandy Neck during a heat wave in October, knowing I have another fifty years on a warming planet that will burn and flood and freeze while entire ecosystems collapse because we, as a people, could not figure out how to consume less, does not feel very good. In November of 2020, our town council passed a climate emergency resolution declaring a commitment to lowering our greenhouse gas emissions. Barnstable has succeeded in hiring an environmental sustainability manager, who has taken on many projects around town. But the council has let state funding wither on the vine by not adopting the stretch code, which is the linchpin for receiving the green communities' designation. Who stands to lose from this decision? Maybe National Grid, because we won't be burning so much of their gas, but I'm not sure why we'd prioritize the profits of a national, of a natural gas utility over the long-term viability of our community. Energy-efficient building is not the main thing driving up construction costs. We're dealing with tariffs, raids that disappear our workforce, and the rising cost of commodities. These are the real drivers of our price spikes. From my experience in the affordable housing sector, developers intentionally create housing that is as efficient as possible. Change is hard, but I would rather deal with whatever material changes this stretch code brings than deal with the type of change that awaits us if we don't do our part in creating a sustainable present. Make good on what you promised us five years ago. Adopt the stretch code. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for, everybody, for thinking carefully about this issue. There's a lot of angles to it, and I, I'm sorry, Jane Ward. I'm sorry, Jane Ward. I am also on the Infrastructure and Energy Committee, and my angle, my interest in the stretch code is from a health perspective. I was an Air Force physician for twenty-six years. The military medical service focuses on prevention and wellness. When I finished my career in the Air Force, I studied for a master's of public health. The focus of my degree was health and the built environment. During that time, I was at George Washington University in DC, and I was able to join a group that, at the National Institutes of Health, actually challenged the green building rating system, the lead rating system, because they allowed indoor air quality to be an option. You didn't have to build a green building that was both energy efficient and healthy for occupants. And since that time, which was 2011, that issue has become more and more and more important and attracted more attention from the National Institutes of Health, that organization that I helped start is now under the National Academy of Sciences. And during the recent UN meeting a couple weeks ago in DC, indoor air quality has been proposed to be a basic human right. So what I want to let you know, we haven't really talked about it this way, but the stretch code is also good public health policy as well as energy efficiency. And the Environmental Protection Agency has assessed that indoor air, in general, is two to five times less healthy than outdoor air in whatever environment it's in. And when you make a house very tight and energy efficient without proper ventilation, you are, you know, you've got an energy-efficient house, but the people inside can get very sick. The stretch code requires not only the HERS rating and the energy-efficient building practices, it requires mechanical ventilation, either an energy recovery ventilator or a heat recovery ventilator system, which brings in fresh air, exhausts the stale air, and makes the appropriate heat and humidity adjustments depending on the season so that it's a ventilation system, but it doesn't overwhelm your energy savings. That's a critical piece. And why is it important to have indoor air quality? Well, there's an entire literature about how much healthier and more productive individuals are in buildings with clean indoor air. The Healthy Building Section in the Harvard School of Public Health has worked with the Harvard Business School. They have a whole book on the return on investment for making buildings healthy for inhabitants. It makes the occupants more productive in terms of their output if they're in a business situation. It reduces illnesses. And in schools, there's a whole literature of studies done on schools with improved indoor air quality.
Ms. Ward, please wrap it up.
By improving the indoor air quality from unacceptable to acceptable, you can raise an entire school's test performance by fifteen to twenty percentage without doing anything else but giving them clean air to breathe and to think with. So I encourage you to consider the health aspect of the stretch code as well as the energy efficiency. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Grove Harris. I own a house in West Hyannisport. I just want to say that I have a gas stove in my house, and I just found out through some indoor air quality monitoring that I am subjecting myself to high VOCs and high CO2 and have been doing that, on the one hand, for a long time, and I'm still with us, but on the other hand, I have been attributing impacts on my health to mold, and it turns out it actually is probably dust and these other factors. But which is just to say that I really hope that our town can stay at the cutting edge of these issues because we keep learning more and making adjustments. And I, to me, if all the communities around us have already gotten this benefit, this money that's otherwise we're leaving on the table, I don't care if you call it a green town or a blue town or whatever, but I want that money to come to my town because otherwise everybody else is, like, I'm not hearing any big complaints about what's happening in the neighboring towns, and I find that a compelling piece of evidence. And I need my town to be offering the kind of leadership that, I'm just back from a plastics conference in Geneva, listening to what is happening on the international levels, and everybody puts down their red lines, and they are arguing for constituents who aren't there, and I need to see the kind of leadership here that steps up. We declared that there was a climate emergency. It doesn't really matter what the source of that is, but we have it. It's, and it's, I'm sorry, it's been really warm lately. I know just weather isn't supposed to say, but everybody I know is more impacted by mold now. Everybody. And so I just feel that this town needs to responsibly get at these funds to improve air quality in our public buildings and to continue us along the path of being smart with the remediations, and I see no problem with asking new construction to be state-of-the-art. If I were buying it, that is what I would want. What I'm instead seeing is garages for yachts in my neighborhood. They can afford the money to make their houses efficient. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Allison Alessi. I live in West Barnstable. I'm a former member of the Renewable Energy Commission, as it was called back then. So this isn't my first time talking about green communities here. Hopefully, it's my last. I hope, I hope. So I've been working as an architect on the Cape for the last twenty years. I've been lucky enough to work all over the Cape. I've been working with a HERS raider for twenty years. He's sitting here. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about that, just for a few minutes. There are two phases of HERS rating. The first is that I send my drawings to them, and we create a model. And with that model, we can test different scenarios, and I love this phase because with our clients, we can prioritize, like, what do we want to emphasize here? Can we do triple-glazed windows? Should we try gas? Should we try electric? And definitely, electric is easier, and it's a better option, but we still can do gas. The last energy model we made, we tested those two scenarios. So I love that flexibility that you have with this HERS model. At the end of that, the model gets submitted for the building permit, and it's part of that process. Then during construction, the HERS raiders come two or three times. We do blower door tests. We do duct blaster tests. I was just at one. I've been at easily sixty or seventy blower door tests. We never don't find a mistake. There's always something. There's always a leak. There's always something that we find during construction that we can catch when we're at the insulation phase. It's much harder to find these things once we're kind of at finishes. So I find it to be a really valuable process. I think also we're talking a little bit about cost, and as I said, with the modeling, you can try a couple of different options. It doesn't have to be the most costly option. And, you know, so there's a lot of ways to do that, but I also think we need to think about the cost of operating these buildings, right? So, you know, I think we're not just looking at what it costs to put all these things in the building, but what does it cost for homeowners to run these buildings for the next ten, twenty years? And with this energy modeling, we can see what it's going to cost. So that's a very valuable tool. And then just to speak to economics, I think we've typically spent anywhere from $1,500 to $2,000 for HERS ratings. We've never not been reimbursed completely through MassSave with rebates. Our last project, I think we got $7,500 in rebates, but we've gotten up to $20,000. There's a lot of incentives from the states for this kind of construction. So the idea that it costs more to do some of these technologies, I don't think that's true. true. Anyway, I think I'll end with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. Pete Sampo, West Barnstable. I've got to figure out this pen. There it goes. Big or better, faster, cheaper, consuming, more, more, more. These principles guided much of the progress the last 150 years. But does a future, what does the future look like, given this mindset? Are our earth and its resources limitless, like our forefathers imagined? Or are there unintended consequences associated with this approach? Does the concept of sustainability, leaving the world no worse and hopefully better, often when you leave this planet, does it mesh with the above thinking? I'm pretty sure it doesn't. I've spent more than 50 years learning, thinking, and teaching about a future earth and the advancement of societies in a resource constrained world. One of the most simple takeaways from my experience is that it is less expensive in the long run to understand and invest today than to fix the consequences of our actions tomorrow. What are the big concerns facing Cape Cod this century? Well, what about rise in sea level and threats of stronger storms brought on by the large scale release of greenhouse gases associated with fossil fuel combustion and its extraction that are driving climate change? For instance, Sandy Neck Beach Park is needing to invest millions as a response to these very real threats. And the town of Barnstable is planning for other long-term changes along our coast that will cost the town serious money. For the homeowner, retroactively upgrading one's home to a more energy efficient, such as better doors and windows, thicker insulation, is much more costly than if the home were built to higher energy efficiency originally. For example, personally, last week, I had an estimate of almost $8,000 to replace a single 1980s exterior door. If I was a new, yeah, it's mind boggling. To then replace all my windows as well, I'm looking at tens of thousands of dollars. It would have been cheaper, again, they didn't realize this in the 80s, but today, if we can do this, what we know will pay off in the long run, it's a lot cheaper. That is the essence of the stretch code. It saves money in the long term for the homeowner and lessens the extraneous cost to society as a result of the inefficient use of energy within a home. You're being asked, as our elected officials, to serve the long-term public good, to help direct a future that is better, more sustainable than it is today. Your opportunity, no, your moral responsibility to future Cape Codders is to mandate energy efficiency today in new home construction. Pay a little bit more now for a less costly future for all. I hope you all vote to join all of the other Cape towns by adopting the stretch energy code and seek green community certification from our state. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Good evening. Cynthia Cole, Barnstable. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I think this, the stretch code is extremely important. The town of Barnstable should be a green community, where the only town on the Cape that is not, as has been said. The stretch code will affect only new construction and new construction and large additions. I think the most important thing is that we're missing an opportunity to access hundreds of thousands of dollars at any time. And not only will that, we would be accessing money that's also going to help us save money in the long run. So this is, seems to be a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Members of the council, thank you. Matt Teig, Barnstable Village, Old Jail Lane. I'm also the vice president of State Home Builders Association, and I also was appointed by Governor Healey on the Commission for Energy Infrastructure, citing and permitting. So I know what's going on inside those halls. I'm going to just make a few points. Number one is, just to be factual, I've built almost 500 houses here in the Cape, many in stretch code towns, I've built municipal opt-in code towns. The house I'm building today in Barnstable is still required to do a blower door test, still required to do a duct test, still has the same amount of insulation on the walls and ceilings or otherwise. I don't need to pay for a HERS rating. Tonight, I've given one of the councilors an actual HERS certificate for a house I am currently building in the town of Dennis. It's a small 1,300 square foot ranch, very modest home. That home has a HERS 42. On that sheet, which goes in the public record, it says forever and ever and ever that that house is going to cost you $1,200 a year to heat and cool, electrical. And you know what? We use natural gas. It's awesome. Right? A fuel source with the commodity price this summer in the United States was negative. They were giving it away, giving it away, and nothing fell in the ocean. What's important to me as a builder is that I have a professional license and I bear professional liability and it's forever when I build a house. I had somebody call me for a house that was built by my company 30 years ago and say, hey, I got a brick fall out of my chimney. It's my, it's my name, it's my license. So if someone buys that house, and that first year of bills is $1,400, which it will be, because the temporary power costs of my guys charging their batteries and running the air compressor were over $110 a month, I will ask, I will fully support the Green Communities Act and fully support the stretch code, should you write in a provision or an amendment that says that the town will bear liability for falsehood promulgated by the HERS program. If that were accurate, I'd be happy to provide that to people. It's not. But it goes in the public record and it's available for viewing forever and ever amen. So when I get sued, I just want, I want somebody else with me because I'm just, I'm just complying by the law. I'm just doing what I'm told. Okay? Couple other things. State of Vermont just rolled their energy code back to 2015 levels. $12,000 more house. The governor said, hey, guys, enough. We need to build 40,000 more houses. It's never going to happen. The most important part is that the building code was designed to be prescriptive under the one and two family program, where a builder and a building commissioner could work together to build a home to keep costs down. Okay? Now you insert a HERS rating. That HERS raider has the same power as Mr. Florence back there to allow me to not get a building permit should I not pass. Are we going to give that power to people on the street, guys who take a couple-week course? I don't think that's smart. In closing, I'll offer you this. The houses I'm building now, they all have air exchangers. If I build in Barnstable and put an air exchanger, it's part of the base code. And you guys are going to give away my children's future, the cost of housing, for a $500,000 grant from the state? That's not going to cover an electric heating system to retrofit this building. Just, just pay attention and listen to people who do this time and time and time. I've done nothing but build stuff for 28 years. It's all I do. You've got to believe the people who do this. We build the most efficient houses in the world right now, in the state, I'm sorry, in the country. California's backed off their local codes. Vermont's just done it. Marion's going to back out of the stretch energy code. You've got to wake up, right?
Mr. Teig, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Mr. Carroll?
I signed in earlier. Okay, I'm good. A couple things. First of all, that was a reality check and that's the real world. When I'm hearing about the end of the earth and all that going on, this is bringing me to flashbacks about when the town got dragged into the wind farm thing and all kinds of promises that we still haven't seen come together yet. And it's been about six or seven years and high voltage already running through the streets. I keep hearing about grants. The grants are great for the town. The town could also build and correct these issues if we have them right now. Why would they have to wait for a grant to make our town buildings healthier? Homeowners should have the right to do what they want. This law takes away the rights of homeowners. In addition to that, the small, the, I don't care what anybody says, the average cost of this thing going up is about, roughly about probably $10,000 on your average renovation. Ms. Clark, West Barnstable, you have antique homes. Most of them are heated by oil with forced hot water, one of the most efficient ways to heat a home. When the HERS gentleman comes in, the HERS setting, that they're setting for what's called a mixed fuel home, meaning if you do decide, I'm going to keep my gas, I'm going to keep my oil, and I'd like to do my renovation, they drop the HERS rating requirement compared to someone who's going all electricity. They make it more difficult for the people that decide, I'd like to keep my furnace, I'd like to keep my burner. They drop that requirement to the point, Mr. Sampo mentioned how much his front door cost, then he's mentioning how much his triple glass windows cost. For you to hit the HERS requirement, for you to choose to keep your current heating system and do a nice renovation on your property and keep maybe the forced hot water that you like, because it's not dusty, okay? And it's not so airtight that you could get ill from the air. For you to be able to do that, you're going to have to increase the, and Mr. Florence can probably back this up, you're going to have to increase the efficiency of the envelope on your older house. The expenses that aren't on, we're not hearing about, we're all hearing about the end of the world. They're leaving out the additional cost of electricity. Those grants are coming from half of our electric bill. We're just paying it through our electric bill and then getting it back from the state. It's just a circle to create these things. There is nothing, if you deny this, there's nothing to stop a homeowner from saying, you know what? I think I'll go get triple glass windows. I think I'll change my walls from two by four to two by eight so I can have an R30 wall and an R65 ceiling. There's a lot of talk about new construction, okay? But the talk about renovating homes, or anybody wants to renovate a home, these costs and additional costs are astronomical. And the talk about a $1,200 annual electric bill, as Mr. Teig said, that's ridiculous. We're already all paying, what, $200 to $300 a month right now for our regular bills, half of which is the money they're collecting to pay for the grants? If the town can get grants, great, but the town shouldn't have to wait for those grants to make the schools healthier. And homeowners should have the option, this is still America, we should have the option on how we eat our homes, what we want to do with our homes. But in addition to that, there's a lot of hidden costs in this. I don't think that the subcommittee, that was all rosy, everything's great, I don't think we got all the facts. And if this does get continued or pushed out, we should have another workshop, which includes professionals in the construction end of the industry, so we can get to real numbers, real costs, and real facts. And I believe Mr. Teig, he's been building houses for 40 years.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
He's a professional. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor President and members of the council, again, my name is Tim O'Neill. And as a detailed oriented builder, I want to emphasize just how important it is that we understand some of the details of what's being proposed in this current form of the stretch code. In my role on the planning board, I'm often the one who digs into the weeds, the appendices, the footnotes, the technical parts, to decide how the policy is actually going to work in reality. And I think that it is really important to look at that here. It cannot be summarized in a three-minute public comment. I would strongly urge all the councilors to read the public comment letter submitted previous to tonight's meeting in detail. Unfortunately, tonight is the annual awards of the Cape Cod Home Builders Association, so there are many members who are very concerned about the further adoption of stretch codes who are not able to attend tonight's hearing. This code is viewed at a national level as still experimental. It was one of the most stringent, most energy efficient, pushing the envelope type of codes when it was rolled out in 2023. It came out of a new energy department within the state, the Department of Energy Resources. It came out like no other building code had ever come out before. It was the drop of a hat, here's the new restrictions, that's it. And all the green communities and stretch energy code towns throughout the state were along for the ride. It caused so much turmoil in those towns, there was a wild amount of pushback, and there was workshops with the state, and they kept on pushing it back. There was not a lot of communication on what was actually going to be changing. And the initial requirements on existing houses and renovations, the thresholds were so low, it killed so many projects dead. And people had extreme difficulty trying to meet that. When that came out, everyone said, thank God the town of Barnstable is not along for this ride. When that came out, I was working for EB Norris, doing one of the largest historic restorations this town has ever seen, at the San Barbara Residence in Hyannisport. That project was permitted here in Barnstable at the Cape Cod Commission, then we went to the state, and it also went to the National Park Service. I was in the driver's seat to see firsthand all of the historic regulations and codes around historic structures, something I'm very passionate about. I was shell shocked when this stretch code came out at the lack of protections for historic structures, of which our town is so predominantly comprised of. Our own Barnstable Historical Commission has the oversight to see over houses throughout the town that are over 75 years in age and are not on the national register and are not in the national registered districts. To my knowledge, the only national registered districts are Hyannisport, I think, Catuett, and the Old Kings Highway. Those houses do not qualify for the exemptions as my reading of this stretch code. The only houses under the proposed stretch code and the mass amendments that qualify for historic exemptions from any of this would be those on the national register and those in those districts. There are so many houses in this town that we are living in and trying to foster their continual care and maintenance and how they affect the fabric and the historical context of our town. That is one of the major red flags beyond all of the other concerns with the cost, the thresholds, the complexity of meeting it. And there is nothing wrong with trying to build new construction buildings that are at the highest level of performance. It is great. If a homeowner and a customer can afford it, there are great teams, there are great professionals in town to help us get there. Taking that strategy and putting it into this type of code that would have effects over the residents townwide would have so many negative effects on our hard work on trying to produce housing that is right for this community, that is local, that's small, scaled, to fit right in our neighborhoods.
Mr. O'Neill, your time is up.
Thank you. I just want to make one closing. If you want to promote the type of small-scale housing we are desperate need of and avoid putting this town and its residents into serious financial burden and along for the ride with a new code department, you must vote no. If you want to lower carbon emissions, you must also vote no on this because at this time, our local grid is predominantly fed by coal and natural gas. And this would increase the emissions because of the amount of electricity burden that would be going in. Until we have a nuclear plant or renewable energy or wind, this makes no sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Mr. Moran?
I too have, excuse me, I too have signed in, so want me to sign in again? All right. I look at this as a very simple resolution, and that being, first of all, this is a one-sided It only says all the good things about why the Green Communities Act should be followed. It doesn't say any of the things that should be considered. Also, it's state-driven, it's politically driven, it's socially driven, all of those things. But I recommend that you, as individual councilors, take into consideration, do you want to sign something like this or support something like this and be subject to being criticized for it? If ever there's a situation that should, how this should be handled, it should be by referendum. If there's a referendum situation within the system, that's where it should go. You have the referendum situation within the system, that's where it should go.
Thank you.
Sorry. Satchel Douglas, Hyannis, by the Airport Rotary. Is it all right if I read off my computer here? Sign in real quick. How's my hair? It's a little dry. Okay, I just want to start by reading the DUR website on how the stretch code applies to historic buildings. Rules for historic buildings are contained in I E C C 2021 and state that provisions relating to the repair, alteration, restoration, and movement of structures and change of occupancy are not mandatory for historic buildings, provided a report has been submitted to the code official and signed by a registered design professional. Now back to my regularly scheduled programming. I'm not a home builder, I don't have any stake in this game. However, I am a professional engineer. I have a pretty cushy job and a lot of time to research things. So I was really glad to find a home to buy in this town that already had heat pumps. Most people don't have the time that I have and the desire to get into the nuances of home heating systems. They trust that when they buy a new home, it's safe, it's well designed, and it's comfortable. And I believe this is one of the key purposes of local government. Through regulation, the town can help protect our local resources, ensure that new homeowners get a house with less indoor air pollution, less impact on the local air pollution, and a healthier town for the citizens of Barnstable. I also want to comment on some things that previous commentators said. Yes, it's true, the Massachusetts grid is about 60% fueled by natural gas. That's why gas prices rise in the winter because there's a fight for how much gas supply is needed. It's split between power generation and home heating. When a previous commenter said the natural gas prices went negative in the summer, I believe that. I wasn't heating my house with natural gas in the summer. In fact, I was cooling it with my heat pump, a feature that comes with heat pumps inherently and is not prevalent in most gas heating systems that I'm aware of. And finally, you know, it's important to remember that we, the public, show up here in the town buildings a few times a month. But town employees have to work in these buildings every day. The grant funding unlocked by passing the stretch code not only lowers the town's operating costs, but makes town buildings a healthier and more comfortable place for town employees to work every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none online?
Yes, we do. We're going to start with Sandy Fitzgerald. Sandy, you have three minutes. You may unmute.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, councilors, for listening to me this evening. I actually sent in an email earlier in the week, and I just wanted to touch on a few topics that I mentioned in my email. After the March presentation, Council Leveque replied, he believed that the town was already green, that the town of Barnstable, we have solar, we have offshore wind under construction, we do have green policies in place, and that despite not being in a green communities, the town itself was working its way, and we were accomplishing many of the ideas in the Green Communities Act. As far as Mass Save, Mass Save does offer incentives to the ratepayers. And what it does is that money that you are receiving is spread out amongst all of the ratepayers in the state. So basically, we are paying for everyone, although I may not take advantage of the Mass Save program. So if you look at our energy bills, and I assume with the Green Communities, we will be pushed more into the, the heat pumps versus natural gas and oil. If you look at the rates, the DPU in November approved a rate increase of 30% across the board for EverSource and National Grid. A 3% temperature change during the winter or a $42 credit would not have made a difference in my home. I bought my home 20 plus years ago. It was built in 1928. I did everything right. I put in new windows, I added a new roof, I put in insulation, I added blown-in insulation to my attic, I purchased energy efficient appliances. But this year, when that rate increase took effect, my electric bill for two individuals in a 2,000 square foot house went from $145 to almost $400. My usage went down, my delivery charge went up. And if you look at the delivery charges, it's all of these incentives that are added, different charges from our state and from our governor that is pushing us towards electricity. It's EV charging, it's, the delivery charges is basically for the rate, for the, excuse me, the grid upgrade, but it's Mass Save, and that's been confirmed. Your constituents, you have 40% retirees. This past winter, many of them had to choose between heating their homes, eating, the houses were pitch dark. And I do not believe that this program is right at this moment. I feel that until the rates and whatnot are adjusted or corrected at the State House, we're hearing it right now, that, that, that the DPU will give low income families energy tax credits or to switch over to heat pumps. But what does that matter if your electric bill is $1,100, $1,200? There, and this is not a, a situation where it's Democratic Republican. There are Democratic state reps that are against this, that have joined, and they added heat pumps, and they said, it's just not affordable. You have counselors on your board that work in the trade industry, and they must hear the exact same thing. So by accepting the Green Communities Act, you're allowing the state to direct us to electricity versus other alternative energy options. When Charlie Baker was our governor, he believed in a variety of energy sources to be competitive and affordable for the ratepayers. But unfortunately, our governor and this administration is directing us towards electricity. So I guess at the end of the day, if we're practicing, for the most part, green energy, green, green, and we're not part of this particular program, I would still feel that we're doing well. If you look at the, the towns that have left, Rochester, Milton, they said because of the average credit they received was maybe $420,000, it was a drop in the bucket to pay for the cost of the, yep, to pay for the cost of the building to keep up with the stretch code. So I would just ask you to reconsider. I'm not asking you to say no, but maybe reconsider and revisit this in six months or whatnot, when it seems like the, the governor and the Energy Infrastructure Commission, they get it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mark Hanson. Mark, you may unmute. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate it. For the record, Mark Hanson, property owner in Hyannis, Massachusetts. Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for hearing this. Been a lot of good comments tonight, some from citizens, from some from professional builders. I've been a professional builder for the last decade. To not reiterate on some of the things that have already been said, maybe if I could add something, in, in looking at the stretch code, oftentimes there, you know, we're looking to gain a 10 to 12% efficiency annually across the board. As a builder, I've seen in other towns that we've operated in, you know, there could be a 10 to 20% increase in the cost of any given project. And where we see the hit the hardest is really in the, in the homeowners that are older, in homeowners that are not doing luxury renovations, you know, a luxury renovation, they can afford to do whatever they need to do. And these other ones, whether it's a building of multifamily housing for rental, which we also do, or whether it's just the fact that most, the majority of the homes in Barnstable are probably built in the 60s and 70s. They're just never going to get the return for the money that they're putting out in order to put these, you know, the windows in that would be required or the heating systems that would be required. I seriously am concerned about the draw on the grid. Oftentimes, when we do projects, it requires an upgrade of transformers, which can take, I've seen transformers take up to a year to put in place to handle some of these heat pumps if they're, you know, on any sort of scale. And so, you know, when we're talking, there was talk about the HERS rating, very difficult at times, and, and can severely hold up projects. And in the end, the person that, it's the end user that really is going to suffer here. And I believe that individuals have a choice, and people have said that tonight, and I do believe that people should shop their conscience. I believe that there are excellent crews out there, that if they want to do that, that if they want to put in the highest efficiency windows or the highest efficiency heat pumps or whatever it is that they'd like to do, I think they should choose to do that on an individual basis. I don't think it should be mandated, mandated, you know, townwide. It puts undue burden on our systems and on the, the costs associated with doing these renovations, which will become more, more frequent as homes are taken over or as people have these systems are failing. And when we build sometimes on these new, these new builds, and we go back 10 years later, we're finding that some of these envelopes and some of these building systems are failing. They're too tight. And this is why you have to have these ERVs and the, the air exchangers and things like that, where even back in the day, you know, we see some of these house wraps, they're just, when there's a failure, it's a real failure, and oftentimes does lead to a health concern. So to think that doing this, you know, absolves us of, from having any issues with regard to air quality health or things like that, it's just not true. So I, I think that, again, I think this should be a personal choice. I don't think this should be a mandate on the town. And I, you know, I appreciate all the points of view, but I, I do believe that in the end, there is not a return on investment for the average citizen in Barnstable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No further public comment? No further public comment in the room? Okay. At this point, I will close the public hearing and open it up to council discussion. Any discussion on my right? Counselor Letky?
This is incredibly difficult. If I was voting for myself, I would absolutely vote for the stretch code. I'm, I'm doing a renovation right now, and I put in solar panels. I didn't have to, but I've, I've been wanting to, and the only reason I could is because I finally did this renovation and had a roof that was okay. I asked two different solar companies in the past to look at my existing roof, and they said, you can't do it. And finally, with the renovation, I could. And it only took two months to get a negative electric bill, and my return on investment will be six years. And I'm really excited about that. But I think the, the points here has to do with, you know, and the, the young gentleman talked about, you know, what does a community do? You know, it, it keeps its, its residents safe and, and that kind of thing. And most of the code requirements, I mean, across the board, in any, any industry or any occupation, or for health and safety, and Jane Ward certainly mentioned a lot to do with health and safety in terms of the air. And this goes, the stretch code goes a little bit further than that, and it, it mandates behavior maybe? And I said earlier, I, I agree with Chris about climate change and the dire circumstances. And again, that's why, if it was up to me, I would have voted yes so easily, it wouldn't, wouldn't even worry about it. But I've, I've been in a quandary. I have, I have gone 180 on this over the last few weeks, several times, back and forth. And, you know, Larry Moran talks about a referendum. You know, we're the only municipality that has this city form of government, where, where 13 of us are making the decisions. Every other community has gone into the stretch code, and they have town meeting. So there's your referendum. We're the only one who hasn't done it. The people said it, and all these other municipalities, they wanted to do it. And I, in the last few days, have reached out to, I won't mention the, my name, but one of the island communities, and they said they've been doing it since 2020, and it's really had some good consequences. You know, they have some of the, the richest folks around out on those islands, and they want to build very fancy houses on the beach, and they want lots of windows. So they get their HERS raider, and many of them have had to say, well, you're going to have to do a geothermal system. That's great, a geothermal system. I have a neighbor a few houses down who did geothermal, and why don't we do more geothermal? That'd be great. I always, I always thought when that Wilkins thing was coming through, God, do a geothermal system out there. You know, that's no impact on that. So that's been, and I said, well, that's the rich people. She said, the rich people are doing fine, they, you know, they can do trade offs. I said, well, what about the people that aren't rich out there on the island? And she says, what it's inspired is modular homes. And they've actually worked with manufacturers, and they have some amazing homes that look like Nantucket cottages that are modular. So there's been some really good things to come from it. The individual I did talk to said the grants weren't that great, like you got this initial grant and then, you know, not so much. So the grant piece, I think, is being played up perhaps too much. And then I talked to another, two municipalities on Cape. One of them, again, does, does beautiful historic renovations, and they've, they've seen positive results. Now, what they didn't like was a little further up, like Wellfleet is in the opt-in, they said, oh my God, don't do that opt-in one because that's just crazy. But they've had great results with the stretch code, and people have been able, they, you know, you drive on the Cape, my God, I mean, it's one thing I've always talked about, we tear down everything in Hyannis. God, oh, let's tear it down. We don't renovate anything. But you see those beautiful homes when you drive further up the Cape. And then I talked to another municipality, might be one of our neighboring municipalities, and they said, wow, the only bad thing we had was when, I think, one of our speakers, maybe Mr. Teague mentioned it, when, you know, yes, the state does control, they, they control at many levels, and they came out with, when this first came in, it was only for new construction, and then they started doing stuff with renovation. And the island community I talked to said this too, you know, we all pushed back. It's not just mandated, you push back. And, and they pushed back, they said, you're not going to get a HERS rating of 42 on a renovation. So they bumped it up to like 65, and that's very achievable. So
Can you wrap it up, Counselor Lucky?
Yeah, I'll wrap it up. And the last thing that, that really irritates me is the Cape Cod Commission. Well, they irritate me on many levels, but on, on this one was with Wilkins too. And when, Jake is over there, when they came in with their, you know, grand finale, where they finally got their, their wishes, they said, oh, you know, we're going to put solar on the roof, and we're going to give you $244,000. And then their attorney said, oh, and we did this really minor thing, it was just an administrative thing, and the way, you know, presented as any good lawyer would. And he said, well, you know, we're not going to comply with all of the stretch code, and we were supposed to, but we're not going to, and the Cape Cod Commission said, that's fine. And to me, that is, that pisses me off, there's no other way to put it, is, and I said at that, standing here at this podium, I said, wouldn't that be ironic that we passed the stretch code and the Cape Cod Commission gave Wilkins a pass on it? That's new construction, they ought to be doing it. So that, that, that really, and so I'll finish with that. But, you know, there ought to be equity here, and we, I just do want to say one thing, is, you know, yes, climate change, believer, if, you know, we want to use belief mechanism, okay? But we have an enormous problem with nitrogen, and we're going bankrupt with our comprehensive waste management plan. I would rather, if we have to have our citizens pay, I'd rather look at some payment there. I think that's more of a problem for us than this one. I think people can do like I did. If you want a solar panels, you want to do this, do it. But I'd rather, if we're going to extract money from our citizens to do good, I think the gooder good is our sewer system and paying for that versus this. Thank you.
Counselor Stein?
A couple of comments. The, the stretch code is only, is only applicable to new single family homes, multifamily homes, brand new ones. We built 25 homes last year, single family homes. multifamily homes, brand-new ones. We built 25 homes last year, single-family homes, in the town of Barnstable. So we're talking 25 people. Or if you're going to do a large, a large, no, not renovation, that's not the right word, a large addition. So if you're going to do a large addition, which is 1,000 square feet, which is, I mean, I put an addition on my house, it was 800 square feet. It was two floors, two bedrooms. I mean, it was big. So 1,000 square feet is a lot. So we're not talking about somebody coming into my house and saying, "I want you to change your heating system." We're not talking about that. No one's forcing any person on a pension to change their heating system. Okay? We're talking about people building brand-new houses. And people aren't building $400,000 houses anymore, they're building one and a half, $2 million custom houses. What's required from the stretch code is a small percentage of that, less than 1%. And that house is going to be airtight for its life cycle. And it will cost much less for us to heat it and keep it warm and cool for the rest of its life. So we're only talking about a really small group of houses here. And we agree with the home builders, that the basic problem is the 85, 90% of the houses on Cape Cod that aren't new, and by 200, the year 2050, when we want us to get down to, most of the houses being electrical, being heated without fossil fuels, is it's the houses we've got now. What do we do with? How do we retrofit those houses? So we're not talking about retrofitting houses. But that's the big nut in the room, is how are we going to retrofit those buildings? But what we're talking about now is brand-new houses and very large additions. That's it. So that's basically what I wanted to say at the moment. So we're not, and we're not, I don't know what, you were talking about extracting money from people. There are some costs on our electric energy bills that have to, that fund the MassSafe program and the CapeLight Compact. And that's, that money goes toward retrofitting houses, and making them more, our older stock. And it's our older stock that's going to be the really hardest thing to get over the finish line. The money for green communities comes from the ISO New England, there's a program where companies pay into the grid, the ISO New England, and they give out grants. So that money is not part of the state, it's not part of the vagaries of the state budget. It's built into the energy system of New England. So that money is pretty secure. So the grants aren't coming from the state budget, they're coming from somewhere else. So we have to keep that all in perspective. So I'll stop for the moment.
Thank you. Counselor Neary?
Thank you, President Tamish, and thank you all who have spoke. Thank you to my friend, Counselor Starr, for this particular item. I, as Sandy Fitzgerald mentioned, I'm one of the counselors that's in the trades. And to be blunt, it doesn't matter to me whether the stretch code is enacted or not, because people are still going to put either duckluses in, or standard heating systems in their homes. So it's kind of irrelevant. But there are some points that I would just like to bring out. I've had many, many, many calls. I don't know, maybe my neighborhood is full of renovators and contractors or something, which is odd, because I'm in the middle of the Cape, I'm on the cheap side of Centerville. But anyways, a couple of points were picked out. And Counselor Lucky touched on it, mandated behavior. You know, I had an electric bill this summer. The supply was 240, and the delivery was 460. So what's going on there? I'm not a fan of ever-source, and I feel that single-source utilities, you know, it's a monopoly, right? I don't have a choice over what they're doing. I look at the, some of the conversations we've had over time on Oak Street. My daughter has a home on Oak Street. And I look at the, you know, dramatic increases in those substations to provide electricity. These are just comments. I wholeheartedly agree, I guess, I think it was Jane brought up, quality of air. So ERVs and HRVs, I'm in the business, they are available, whether it's forced hot air with gas, or forced hot air with a heat pump, or with, you know, you've got indoor equality items that can be purchased, that can be included, whether it be in a duckless. If you've got a dusty, musty house, and you've got a duckless system, and you're circulating that air, that's still no good for you, right? So it's water and air, right? We want to try to clean those up. And there were great points made, I think, all around, whether it be the municipal buildings, the whole bit. I don't have to mention the schools, right, that we've had some issues with. Barry did mention also, you know, I get a little, I'm concerned, again, being a one-source utility deal. And, you know, I do business with architects and with builders all over the Cape. I will tell you, an interesting thing is, in many times, I'll get a call, "Hey, Paul, you know, I'd like you to come give us a quote on plumbing and heating and cooling in our house, and I've got some plans, I want to ship them to you." And the first thing I do is say, "Well, wait a second. Are these HERS raider plans that you're sending me? Or are these the plans that you wish would be how you would like to build your house?" So these are just things, I think, that you should, you know, that need to be taken into consideration. I do believe that we have been experiencing a change in our climate, although I will tell you, I did have some customers last year, and it was brought up, thankfully, by Barry, about the temperature last year. It was unusual. We put some heat pumps into folks' houses, and they had a $987 heat bill. And we had that brutal, actually, I loved it, because it was the first time the bogs froze in, I think, 15 years that I can remember. So that was a big thing for me. I enjoyed that. But these are just some of the things that I think that need to be considered. I have had, and I've shared this, you know, there are many people in the trades that I'm involved with, and I have had some pushback. And in the big picture of things, you know, a lot of the stuff in town has already been built out, a lot of stuff in the town has already been permitted. So I guess I'll leave it up to the other 12 counselors here to come to a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Crowe?
Thank you, President Tamish. I have a problem with mandates. I think the public is smart enough to decide what is most efficient for themselves. What happens with a lot of these, they get grants, and then, from the state, and then the state comes back and asks for demands that everybody here will be on electric system. If you've seen the prices of electricity, we've had the boondoggle of the wind offshore. And, you know, I've heard people say, "Well, we're saving money." Well, from what I understand, it's about eight to 12 times as much as other sources, particularly natural gas and other things. And to be requiring people all to go to electricity, and then, at some point, they'll say, "Well, first thing, they're subsidizing, we're subsidizing what they're asking for, is to go with electricity, by penalizing other forms of energy." And they've seen it, we've seen it in Europe, we've seen it a lot of these different places, where these countries can no longer afford their heating bills and air conditioning bills. And in Germany is one good case, is they're losing a lot of their manufacturing because of the costs of energy there. I understand the Russian gas situation and everything else, but they can, you know, we have natural gas that we export that would solve some of those problems. I see this as a way to permanently make everybody toe the line. I mean, we've, just look at the EVs we've had. EVs have been sitting on the lots for years, and we just had a spike in them because of the $7,500 credit just expired recently, and there was a push to buy some then. But you're basically incentivizing something that most people don't want, and other people are paying for it. And the other citizens, because somebody wants to drive an EV, which is actually, it's not emissions-free, it's actually higher emissions than most standard combustion engine cars. Simple, it's with, well, with all the, with the batteries, the mining of the batteries, the transportation of those materials back and forth from the Far East, you add all those costs up, and those cars are not, are not more efficient, or less polluting than what we have here. And I've read a lot about this myself. So I think this is allowing the state to, giving them an opportunity, with giving us a little bit of incentive to down the road, forcing everybody into one power source, and that power source is going to be extremely expensive. And we don't have the ability, at this point, with what we have in the cost of energy here, to fix that in within the next two or three decades. Not the way we're going in Massachusetts. So I would definitely be against this, and I just think it's the wrong way to go. We've seen many, many, many mandates that have proven over the years that the politicians don't actually know what's best, and they don't have the far sight to see what it's actually going to cost people in the future. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you.[1271.23][1271.23](APPLAUSE) Further discussion? Counselor Boom? Excuse me, Counselor Boom. I just want to make sure that the court noted that Counselor Ovek is here. Thank you. Welcome, Counselor Ovek. Thank you. Counselor Boom?
Mr. President, I have a question for you, two questions, actually. Ms. Sullivan and Mr. Rossi are here, are wondering if they have something to say. Also, a gentleman here who is a HERS raider, his profession was denigrated somewhat, and I wondered if he had anything to say about that.
Two things. I would certainly encourage our guests from the state to comment if they wish. The public hearing portion of it's been closed, but, I don't know that he's been denigrated, but some people may disagree with the process, but...
Oh, they said, you know, he took a two-week course. I'd like to know what his background actually is.
Well, if you have that specific question, please go ahead.
Ask, go ahead, ask him.
Ask him?
Yes.
Yeah. You heard what I would like to know. Do you mind coming up and telling us?
Sure, please. Just identify yourself also, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Christopher Mazzola. I am the production manager at Home Energy Raiders. We're based out of Sagamore Beach. I've been a HERS raider for 21 years, as of April 15. I am a building scientist. I have been studying homes. I was a home builder before I was a HERS raider. Was an electrician for, I was an electrician's apprentice for a while. I was a HVAC apprentice for a while. In both cases, I learned quickly that I didn't like to cut my fingers, and I didn't like getting shocked. I wasn't a very good sparky. I feel like, you know, over 20 years, I've learned, I've learned this, that as a HERS raider, we bring a level of value engineering as best as we can. In my profession now, you know, we, let me digress. I, the company I work for now, has 28 employees, we do 2,300 HERS ratings a year. We cover all of Massachusetts, Maine, Northern Ireland, we've done things in Vermont, northern, western New York. There are enough cities and towns in Massachusetts where I don't particularly need Barnstable to vote I do, I've done over 200 HERS ratings in Barnstable over the last 20 years. Builders use me for different reasons. I do my best to save them money. I do my best to provide the homeowners an expectation of the home that they want. If they want gas, we do everything in our power to design a house that has gas. There are workarounds, there are trade-offs. And, I mean, that's really it. I mean, we do our best, we do our due diligence, we try to meet the expectations of the municipality, the homeowner, the builder, the designer. And that's really it. That's it.
Well, thank you.
Counselor Starr? Excuse me. All right, you're specifically asking him a question?
I would want to ask him a question, if I could.
Go ahead.
So first of all, Mr. Mazzola, you said you do, you've done 200, give me the word.
HERS rating?
Home energy ratings in the town of Barnstable, and we're not a stretch code town.
Right, right, over the past 20 years, yeah. Yep. I mean, I would say this, I would say this, we have almost 2,000 clients as a company. Our clients build in other towns. They get in, builders get into habits. Builders get into habits. They use us for all their homes.
Okay.
Just because they build in Barnstable, they're not going to exclude it from using us. We've brought value to them in other ways.
So my question is, so somebody said, "This law takes away the option of how I'll heat my house." Is that a true statement?
No, you can, you can heat your house with any fuel type that you would like. There's a difference in the HERS score, three-point swing. There are credits for, it's a trade-off.
Yeah, okay.
So you can heat with gas, build a low embodied carbon home, and it's a higher HERS score.
Okay, thank you.
I've never had one fail. I've never had a home fail.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this, Counsel?
No, any other, no, I think we're all set.
You're all set, I think.
I just wanted to say thanks to Jane Ward. I, like Betty, I wavered on this from one side to the other. But I really believe in the good public health policy part of this, and the long-term public good that will happen. The one thing that we may want to have a discussion about in the future, and we could probably do this anytime, certainly doesn't affect anything we do tonight, is we might want to discuss a historic home exemption. Just throwing that out there as a concern. Other than that, at this point in time, I think I'm in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just as a clarification, Mr. Florence, is, are there exemptions, or can the town modify this code at all, or is it a take it or leave it?
I can leave it.
Good evening, Mr. President, and members of the town. Counsel Brian Florence, your building commissioner. That's a state regulation, you can't waive it.
Okay, so it's a take it or leave it?
It's correct, sir.
It's all in if you vote it, is that correct?
I'm sorry, sir.
You're all in if you vote it?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I ask Brian a question?
Brian, excuse me, Mr. Florence?
Brian, just, I don't know who asked this question, but it's about protection for historic buildings. Is that, do you see that as a problem?
My understanding is it does apply to state and federal, federally protected, registered buildings.
The stretch code does?
Yeah, you may, non-registered structures may need to comply.
But it would have to be a historic building that's either brand-new, which isn't going to happen, or a hot thousand-foot addition?
So there's a registry, there's a state registry and a federal registry, if it's on those, if it's on one of those. And the building code is the same way. The building code applies to, the exemptions in the building code only apply to structures that are on a state or the federal registry.
Is that true on the base code?
On the base code, yes.
Yeah, and the stretch code. So there's no difference.
In Massachusetts, that's correct.
So there's no difference how historic buildings are treated between the stretch code and the base code?
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you. I didn't know that. Okay?
Thank you. Counselor Tirkelson?
I have a question for Director Florence.
Oh, gee, I'm sorry.
If we had 25 projects last year...
If we had 25 projects last year, as Counselor Starr has stated, do you have any idea on how many of those decided to opt in for HERS rating on their own without the stretch code being part of the town requirements?
Well, there's two things to that, Counselor. Counselor Turkelson, probably most of the structures that were new had a HERS raider, I would guess. But stretch code does apply to remodeling as well. It's not just for new buildings and for additions. It does reply to apply to remodeling. I know that because I just remodeled a house in a stretch community and my project it I had to break it into two so that it didn't apply.
And do you think that in the town of Barnstable for remodels, I don't do you know how many remodels we had in comparison to 25 new builds? How many remodels we had?
If I had to guess off the top of my head, I would say somewhere in the vicinity of 1,200.
And do you know what percentage of those 1,200 would have had a HERS rating on their own without the stretch code being mandated through the town process?
I do not. I know that some of them do, though.
Okay. And this probably is not a question for you, so thank you. That might be a question for.
Don't go too far. Brian, don't go too far.
For either Lisa or Michael. The question about the data on when we do a HERS rating, or maybe the HERS raider might be to answer this. Say the HERS rating says your house is going to cost $1,200 to heat and cool your home. Do we actually have long-term data that the state's been gathering over time to see how accurate the HERS rating predictions are in comparison to actual real-life statistics living in the buildings long-term over five, 10, 15, 20 years?
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to that. So one thing to note about a HERS rating is it doesn't factor in occupant behavior. So a lot of it is projected energy costs without factoring in how much energy a particular person uses. So occupant behavior does have a pretty big impact on actual electricity electricity use, whereas a HERS rating in particular only provides information about the projected use before that factor before that gets factored in. So it's like similar to like a mile for a car, but like for a house is like how I like to describe it. So occupant behavior does have a pretty big big impact on what the bills are actually looking like, but the HERS rating is just projected before occupant behavior is considered.
So when a HERS raider projects the amount, is it just projecting basically how much it will cost to run your home if nobody lives in it? I mean, I don't even understand that concept now that you've said that out loud.
Well, it's similar to so, yeah, I think the way to describe it is it's like instead of it's more and Chris might be a better person to explain this, I'd say, but the way I like to describe it is like it it's general assumption about the operating costs of like but people might like have leave a wind or like leave their lights on 24/7 or might have like just the energy consumption use, I don't think is factored in. I like to see it more as like it's just what an estimate would be. And so it's an estimate rather than a thing. People might be really diligent on conservation efforts, so the bills might be less than what they expect. They might be bigger energy wastes, having a heating system on and the window open. That would be higher energy rates. So ultimately, I think it's like a projection rather than an actual because consumer behavior really depends.
Knowing that consumer behavior really depends and can be different between any two households, is the state collecting data in the comparison of HERS ratings to actual behavior to modify this process and use data for real-world application if we're not basing the HERS rating on on behavior? Now we know behavior. Is there any tracking of this data long-term over time?
I might differ, Lisa, on this one, but one thing I can say is that the HERS rating requirement that has been in effect for the stretch code since its first inception in 2008 or '09, that requirement's actually gone their maximum allowed HERS index is actually gone more stringent over time. So between 2008, what you need to meet to get a HERS rating in 2008 is different than what you need today. So that it's sort of been becoming more efficient over time as technology gets better.
Okay. Does Lisa want to add anything?
We do track HERS ratings and we track the number that are bold and what the averages are, and we do not we're not really tracking the cost. I mean, when a HERS rating is done, it's before occupants move in, like Michael said, and you don't even know how many occupants are going to live in a home. Someone could have a six-bedroom home and have two occupants. They could have 12 occupants. It's that would be a difficult thing to predict as you're not asking who will, you know, you could have four bathrooms and two people, too. It's very difficult to know how people are going to use their homes.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to make one last comment so that when people understand my vote. I built a house in 2017. I did not use a HERS raider. I didn't even know what a HERS raider was. Maybe in hindsight, that would have been a beautiful thing. I did design my house specifically for solar. I have a battery backup, and I chose mini splits for the way I live because having the setup of my house and two people would have been super expensive to have a three-zone forest hot air heating system. I used to have forest hot water, which I loved, but that would have been prohibitively expensive as well. So I designed my house for the way that I live. It did become super expensive last year. I lived in my bedroom. I kid you not. My house was 43 degrees to 46 degrees from December 15th to April 15th. I never turned on my heating system in any part of my house besides my bedroom because I could not afford the bill. My first bill was $175 in usage and $250 in delivery. That was in November. So I appreciate the energy efficiency of these systems, but it's expensive because of the delivery fees going up. So and I have solar. I produce more than I use. But even with producing more than I use, I had a $450 bill for the next one when I heated one room. So it's complicated, and, you know, knowing what I know and understanding energy efficiency and how we want to electrify the world, it's a complicated vote, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Florence, I just want to clarify something. I believe someone had said that on a renovation, it only applies if it's more than 1,000 square feet. But you had said that you had a project that was so maybe was your project more than 1,000 square feet?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, that's that was the case. So it was more than 1,000 square feet. Yeah, that is a recent change to that stretch code.
Okay, so it it is on a renovation. It's only if it's more than 1,000 square feet addition. So if you're not putting an addition on, it does not apply, is that?
Nope. The the project I was talking about, there was no addition. It was not a new structure. It was a remodel of the interior components of a building exceeded 1,000 square feet. Stretch code applied.
Okay, so it's not additional space. It's if you renovate or modify or add. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, you so what you've heard tonight already was if you build it new or you put an addition on. I'm saying it encompasses more than that. If you have a renovation that exceeds 1,000 square feet, your your renovation applies, whether you add or not.
That that.
That's correct.
That's my question.
Yes, sir.
And that's my concern. Thank you.
So can I?
Counselor Schnepp, did you?
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
I missed you there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. We've we've heard a lot of information tonight, and I know that everyone on the dais is mulling over a lot of what they've heard and how to prioritize what they've heard in relationship to this item. And I it's very unfortunate that we have had such high electric bills in the last year because I think that's having some influence on how we're approaching this this issue. But we've also had significant increases in our home insurance premiums. I mean, I know mine's doubled over the last year or two, which I think is indicative of the the bigger system that we're dealing with, and that's our climate and the uncertainty of weather patterns and how that's, you know, not going away. And I think this is a very small step for the town of Barnstable to be moving forward with addressing, you know, our little piece of what's going on, not just in our community, but in the globe. And so I urge you to consider that, you know, we are taking a vote that is really impacting not just us, but our futures, our future generations, and to to really consider that before you cast your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Levesque?
Yeah, I kind of like what Cliff Carroll had to say, that I don't think we've been given enough information. I think it has been one-sided, and as I've said, if it was just me voting, I would absolutely vote for it right now immediately, it'd be done. But there's been too much public comment from the other side without kind of expert testimony, if you will. And again, with speaking to these other communities, maybe, I don't know, Mr. Kupfer could could go out and we could have some more testimony to help us because, again, I flip back and forth. I mean, while I personally would, I think as a town counselor, with what I've heard from my citizens, who, again, are at the top of that pyramid, I would vote no. But maybe I shouldn't vote no. But I feel like I need more information. I don't know if anybody else feels the same way.
Counselor. Counsel Levesque, we haven't had the pleasure of hearing from you tonight.
Thanks for that, President Tamish. So I know you can't see me over here. I'm sorry. I got obstructed view seating. I feel like I'm at Fenway Park. The Section 12, Grandstand 12, Row 3, Seats 3 and 4. The I've I've sat on the council now for eight years, and this is, I believe, the third time we've we've heard this discussion. So I'm well-versed in 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 the discussion regards to the green communities. I've had vast discussions with builders and with with Counselor Starr, and I, you know, I have great respect for Counselor Starr and the fact that he champions this, brings it up here. And it's actually quite inspiring, actually. I know we might disagree, people might disagree with it, but to be able to articulate and and continue to have a conversation. I believe I believe it has improved, and I and I believe it's been talked about, you know, ad nauseam. Now, again, it doesn't mean that we're not a green community if this isn't adopted. We are a green community. I would like to know, though, because it says here that it's recommended by the town manager. I don't always want to put words in the town manager's mouth, but it says it's recommended. Town manager else, why is it recommended?
For my consideration.
For my consideration only. Okay, just making sure. Okay, just I wasn't sure if there was a certain reason for that. So, okay, so here we are considering it. That being said, the I and I understand the burden it places on the builder and the costs of it. I do have concerns also, too, on what I'm hearing from as far as breathability of buildings. I've had conversations with people from the historic side that are saying that homes now will be activated and now Historic Commission will have to sign off on things that will make maybe the building not so much historic anymore because of these type of things, which quite honestly, if it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander, in my opinion. I think it's the it's actually the houses that are in the historic area are the ones that are probably have the most energy inefficient, and it's not the new homes. I mean, we're squeezing every little thing out of a new home when it's really the older homes that need to be, and hence why the remodels should be included in this. So I guess what I'm trying to say is I think I'm at the point now where I I think that I think it's worth a try. And but I also think it's something that should be reviewed on a periodic basis, and so if it's not working, then we should move in a different direction. But that's how I I think about it at this point. I've heard enough on each of the side. And again, and it's never, I think it's been really articulated well by other counselors. This is one of those things where you're not, you know, 90% against or 10% for or this is everybody's hovering around, I think, the 60/40, the 50/50, and it's a difficult decision to make as a town counselor. It's uneasy to be here on the dais for this question. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Berdick?
I'll move the question.
Second.
Counselor has moved the question. Madam Clark? This is this is on moving the question.
Right, move the question. Counselors Berdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Ledke?
No.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnepp?
Yes.
Starr?
No.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
No.
Blum?
No.
One, two, three, four noes. Eight, yes.
Okay. All right, so the question has been moved and will now vote on the merits on the article itself.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Counselors, Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
No.
Appalling order?
Yes.
We were told by Counselor Starr that a motion we made to continue this until July, because of that, we turned away public commenters early on, right at the start of the meeting. We turned five people away. There were also two counselors on Zoom, and there was one counselor who was on here for the full meeting. So I believe that could be in conflict with the open meeting law or with the Ethics Commission. So if the vote is held tonight on this, we will be contacting the Attorney General's office. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Attorney Nober, do you have a comment on that?
We're in the middle of a.
I'm sorry. Did we do that? Did you really say that?
We're in the middle of a vote here.
Did he say we're going to continue?
No.
Good evening, counselors. Karen Nober, Town Attorney. I guess I'm not sure. Well, the Ethics Commission is not going to care. I'm not sure what the open meeting law violation is. I'm not sure if he is claiming that a quorum of counselors discussed this outside of a meeting. If that's the case, then that's an issue, but I'm not entirely sure what I don't know if you want to.
Can I can I clarify?
We were told that it was likely a motion we proposed to move this away to July.
Could, excuse me, could you move forward, please?
Okay, I think what he's saying is people did not attend public comment because they thought that Counselor Starr was going to make a motion to actually amend the item to change the effective date. That's what it was.
It's not the effective date that the when the vote was was heard. So we turned I had five public commenters lined up and said, guys, you can go home.
Did he really say that?
And I can't get it. It's the home builders' meeting tonight. I I I'm sorry. That's a proper thing, but.
Well, I mean, I think I think it's their choice whether they attend public comment. A counselor can say he's going to make a motion. He may make one, he may not make one. She may make one, she may not make one. I don't think I don't think that affects your ability to take a vote on this.
Can I before you can I read my motion?
Well, you're taking a it.
Oh, okay.
The question has been moved.
The question has been moved, I believe, correct?
Yes. So you need to take the vote on the item.
All right, just to clarify, if we take the vote on the item, someone could move for reconsideration tonight, or do we have to wait?
You can't.
How Counselor Starr to make his motion to change the effective date?
No, no. I want the effective date. Somebody else? Are you looking at me?
I guess the question it well, I guess it's too late at this point because it's passed, so.
Could he move? One of the losers, one of the whichever side?
One of the one of the counselors on the prevailing side would have to make a motion for reconsideration after you have taken the actual vote, if that's what you want to do. But then but then the motion for reconsideration is to take the vote again. It's not to amend it.
Can I just say? Do you want to go for I R S?
So that's all out of order. All of this that's occurring here is out of order. This is.
Well, I'm just trying to clarify. There was a point made and.
Right, but even that, none of it's germane to the debate or my motions or what's on the floor, and it's all none of it's parliamentary, so.
Well, we were right. The the motion was made and seconded to move the question.
So that's all out of order. All of this that's occurring here is out of order. This is...
Well, I'm just trying to clarify. There was a point made and...
Right, but even that, none of it's germane to the debate or my motions or what's on the floor, and it's all, none of it's parliamentary, so...
Well, we were, right. The motion was made and seconded to move the question.
Correct.
And we did move the question. We're now voting on the main issue. And there was a question raised on that, the propriety of it, which is why I brought the town attorney up. So, you know, at this point, this is a proper motion before the body, correct?
Yes, so, well, it's not a motion, it's you are voting on the item. Yes, you should continue that vote.
Council Levesque, did you have a question? I, you know, is it, should we even be discussing this? No. Okay, why don't we just go to the vote, huh? I guess we have to go to the vote.
Crowe?
No.
Levesque?
Pass.
Levesque?
No.
Neary?
No.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
No.
Turkelson?
No.
Blum?
Yes.
Berdick?
Yes.
Back to Levesque.
I'm, so I did get here late. I don't know about this motion that we're supposed to...
No, it doesn't make a difference.
You're just voting?
It was not brought up. It was not discussed in front of the council. If I might, I believe that there was some discussion with Councilor Starr and some other people about changing the effective date from January 1st, 2026, to July 1st, 2026. But the motion was never made to amend the article.
Yes.
Seven yes. Five no.
Okay, the motion does pass. Thank you. Okay, we will move on. Councilor Neary, could you do 2026-035, please?
With pleasure, President Tamish. As soon as I find it here. Let's see. 2026...
035.
035. This is all business, which may be acted upon with a majority vote. This is item number 2026-035. It is appointments to a board, committee, or commission as written.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion on my right? Council Levesque?
I would actually make the motion to bifurcate from the planning board Catherine Finkelstadt as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2028.
Okay. The motion has been made to bifurcate the article. Any discussion on the motion?
Second.
There is a second? I'm sorry, was there a second?
Yeah, Councilor Neary.
Okay, Councilor Neary. Okay, discussion on the motion to bifurcate. Councillor Levesque?
Thank you. I've got a number of councillor, I mean councillor, phone calls in regards to this appointment. The, we had a number of people apply for this position, starting before the position was vacated. So the vacated position, and this is Robert Twist, who, again, compliments to Robert Twist, he did a great job. And, you know, really sorry to see him go, but understood that he felt his time was up. So his term expired 20, I'm sorry, June 30th, 2025. We had people apply before then, whatever reason, the Appointments Committee decided not to fill the vacated position, waited for whatever reasons I do not know. The, there, I guess there was a quorum issue, a meeting actually had to be canceled because of it. I know when I was the Chair of the Committee, and I've been on, was on the Committee for a number of years, we always tried to get those positions filled so that we wouldn't have quorum issues. And that these, the people who apply for the position, especially if they do it before the term expires, they should have a strong consideration because they kind of took the time to get interviewed and put there. But again, it was left open. And the Appointments Committee continued to interview the position until September. And in August, there was this woman here that applied. I do not know her. I do know that, just from listening to the meeting, that she decided to run. Her own words were because Eric Schwab and Stacy Gunther kind of asked her to and encouraged her to. And, you know, we've heard a number of discussions and people, you know, come up to the podium and have concerns about people being kind of picked from the social media website. And she is actually a moderator for both Nextdoor and the Barnstable Official. That being said, lived in this town for four years, really doesn't have any experience as being a planner. Three other candidates were clearly builders, city planners, have architectural degrees, checker boxes and different, you know, very qualified and also offer a certain level, maybe diversity that could be included in the planning board of people groups they represent, towns they represent, villages they represent, I'm assuming I should say. So, when the time came to make this decision, also, too, there were two members of the Appointments Committee that were not there, Jeff Mendes and Seth Berdick. There was no discussion whatsoever about this candidate, really, and no other candidate that had applied. And there was even one that actually was interviewed that day. There was no discussion. So I just, you know, and then boom, this person was nominated, the three people voted for them, who, you know... Again, you know, I just, I think the process was flawed. And the, again, nothing against, I do not know this person, but I just think that it should be maybe moved back to the Appointments Committee. And they really should do a more robust discussion of all the candidates with the entire Appointments Committee there. I think that would satisfy the people who have called me with concerns in regards to the level of transparency in regards to this and why we're not picking the people who, on paper, and, you know, are longtime Barnstable residents, so on and so forth. Again, this person moved here in 2021 and doesn't have the experience that these others do. And I'd like to hear maybe in a more robust discussion at the Appointments Committee of why they want to choose the person that they chose. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Penn?
Yes, thank you. You know, all I'm going to say is, you've got to be kidding me. Councilor Levesque is talking about a flawed process with a nomination for planning board? Is that what I'm hearing? Shame on him. This is the person who had, there was a person who was nominated a year or two ago, I think a year ago.
Four years ago.
Got a letter saying, welcome and congratulations for your nomination to the planning board. And then all of a sudden, they took it away and put somebody else in there, and he's worried about a flawed process? You've got to be kidding me. Whatever's here on the paper is going to be put forth because the Appointments Committee has recommended it. Period. Shame on you. My hair's on fire. I cannot believe it.
Thank you.
Can I respond, please?
Is it, see if anyone else wants to discuss first. Councilor Levesque?
I agree completely. Shame on you, Councilor Levesque. Awful, awful what you just did.
Councilor Schnep?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think it's appropriate for any of us to be condemning other councillors for making a reasoned argument. I was one of the councillors who expressed some concerns. I have gone back and watched all of the Appointments Committee meetings regarding this position. And I was concerned that the planning board had a vacancy for several months. There were several excellent candidates that interviewed in April and June. And the Appointments Committee did not make a recommendation until Ms. Finkelstadt was recruited and then applied for the planning board position. I was also concerned that when the Appointments Committee, who generally, I have been impressed with their interviewing and, you know, their thorough decision-making on most of their appointments, failed to have any discussion about the five candidates that applied for this position. So I was concerned that this would go forward without a full vetting of the town council. Because, you know, we all recognize the importance of our regulatory committees. So I will be supporting the bifurcation. But I also agree that the Appointments Committee can go back and debate, you know, whether this was the best recommendation based on their interviewing process. And if this was what would come back, then that would be what we would vote on. But I don't think that Councilor Levesque's decision tonight should be construed as anything other than concern about the current process for this appointment.
Thank you. Any further discussion on my left? On my right? Councilor Turkelson?
I'm actually surprised that Councilor Levesque said the silent part out loud. As far as why we took so long, because people kept applying. So I think it was only fair that we keep interviewing people as applications came in. We had one meeting that had to be canceled because, I can't remember what board it, what other agenda got overwritten on top of the Appointments Agenda, so that took time. So I think what we did was a fair process. In order to make sure that we didn't just take the first person who showed up, we interviewed every person. The quiet part out loud is that Catherine doesn't meet your agenda and your needs, so you don't like her. So I think that's pretty clear. And you can shake your head all you want, but, I mean, let's be honest, you've said it. If Eric Schwab and Stacy Gunther hadn't recruited her, you, I'm speaking, I don't really know that you would have any offense to her. So I think because Catherine was honest and told us how she got there, which I appreciated, she doesn't fit your agenda. So I think we all know the appointments process has been flawed long before I got to this council. That's one of the things that made me run. So here I am. And I think Catherine probably has done a lot of planning in her job. She puts together teams. I shouldn't even be having to justify this, but I'm going to tell you. She's put together...
Councillor, one at a time, please.
She's put together teams, legal teams, logistics, planning calendars and people showing up at a video, a TV, commercial, movies. She's probably planned a lot more than most of us in this room. As far as why other councillors weren't there, I can't speak to why they weren't there. They were notified. I emailed the entire board saying, we will be voting on this item at this date. If they can't show up, I'm not responsible for their schedules. So to think that there's some collusion is wrong. I asked for a nomination, it came up, we voted on it. You're not in the Appointments Committee, so you get to say yes or no to the person, but to criticize the process, you're not in it. Again, it was flawed a lot longer than when I got here. And thank you for saying the silent part out loud.
Councilor Neary?
If I may break the tension here, you know, I've had a little bit of thing going on in history there, right? So my, my Gal Friday is like this now undercover agent, right, on one of the social media sites. She pulled the thing up. And I guess, I don't know Catherine Finkelstadt, but, you know, I think that... Shouldn't Mr. Schwab apply for the planning board? I mean, it does appear, if you watch the interviews, that this is almost like a, this is like a surrogate, you know? Oh, this is a, so, you know, again, I'm a lame duck. I just, it's peculiar. The optic is a little odd. That's all I'll say.
Thank you. Councilor Crowe?
The optic, from what I see, is part of the usual course of Councilor Levesque. According to the rules, from what I understand, the town rules that once the, somebody is recommended to the town council for a position, that that person is supposed to be scheduled for the very next council meeting to be voted upon. It's not what you did, Mr. Levesque, back with, back with Mr. Schulte. You didn't like him. You waited for other people to apply for the position, and then you worked a way to get him out. You can smirk all you want, okay, but the fact is, people know what you've been up to, okay? And you can, you know, this was done according to the proper rules. You don't like the person who was recommended? Too bad.
Any further discussion? Who has not spoken? Who has not spoken? I will go back to Councilor Levesque.
Thank you for letting me finally respond. I do find the fact that, and thank you for, Councilor Schnep, for basically saying the same thing and I just said, and Councilor Neary for backing up as well. Of course, I'm the fuzzy pincushion that they all want to attack. And just to give a little bit of a history lesson, in 2021, April... If I'm being accused of something that was a year...
No, count, Mr. Schulte, no.
That's fine. And Mr. Schulte, yeah, that's fine. So in 2021, Mr. Schulte did interview for the position. And the reason why you don't stop me is because you just, you want to try to shut me up. And I'm not, I'm always going to have the courage to actually, to say the truth. And so the, he was recommended for the position. But what was happening at the council level on the Appointments Committee was that we need to create vacancies, and if a vacancy is going to be open, then we need to advertise. And we didn't advertise those positions properly on the Appointments, any Committee, never mind the Appointments Committee. You didn't know a vacancy was created because, basically, if you didn't see an opening, you didn't know to apply. So what we did is we changed it at the council level, and the process was basically what you see today. And you do, you basically execute that now. The Appointments Committee executes that now. We didn't even ratify the Appointments Committee because for years it never even got ratified. So we had some things to improve on, and that was my first year as president. It definitely was some bumps and rope. Mr. Schulte, you know, and I think I apologized then. I know that you got a letter from our assistant, and that was the process at the time, that you will, congratulations, you'll be moving to that, to the next meeting. But again, in discussions that I had and looked at the town rules, we did not advertise that position to be open. So I just, I, I, and then honestly, the Appointments Committee, I wasn't on the Appointments Committee, decided to reconsider that vote and consider all the candidates that were put forth. And they actually put somebody in recommendation, I think just after the July meeting. And that's what, that's what went forth. So, and since then, and again, it was a bumpy road, and I apologize for that. But, but the process was cleared up after that, and there hasn't been an issue since. So, and then with this, I've had, again, concerned citizens ask me about this, and I, I am addressing it. So, and I've, obviously, there's other councillors... Thank you. And shame on me, shame on you for even saying that's ridiculous.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion. Bob, no.
As the subject of this conversation, point of order, I'd like to at least address this.
No, no, Bob. That's not a point, that's not, yeah, point of order is, is from here.
Well, you did that with Mr. O'Neill earlier, just letting him speak.
Mr. O'Neill was, we're, we're not going to go down there, Bob. We, we're just going to do this. Okay. We have a motion made and seconded to bifurcate 2026-035. So a affirmative vote would split the two appointments.
Counselors. Crowe.
No.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludke.
No.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
No.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
It's 12 yes.
Thank you. With the consult, consent of the council, actually, they're two separate. Can we do appointments and reappointments as a consent? Although they're, okay. Okay. Okay, with the consent of the council, I would like to move 2026-037 and 2026-038 to a second reading on 10/23/2025.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Counselors. Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you. Counselor Clark, if you could do 2026-039, please.
Thank you, President Tamish. This is new business, being referred to a public hearing on October 23, 2025. Item number 2026-039, amending the code of the Town of Barnstable, Part 1, General Ordinances, Chapter 37, Boards, Committee, and Commissions, to revise the appointments committee and to add a new zoning and regulatory committee of the town council.
Second. Okay. Motion made and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Neary.
Yep.
12 yes.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn. Seconded. Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
12 yes.
Thank you.